Good afternoon. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, July 12th. We have a very full agenda today and we're going to lose one of our planning commissioners at 3:00, I understand. So, we're going to move things around a little bit because we have a few items on the agenda that require six votes. So, before we lose him, we'll hear those. If you have a cellphone with you, now would be a really good time to turn it down or turn it off. I just did mine. If you're with us for the first time, the way this kind of works is we'll go, we'll do a little housekeeping here at the beginning. And then, we'll go through, when we get to the items to be heard, we'll go through them one by one, we'll call the case, we'll have the applicant come forward, they'll give us their name and address for the record, they'll tell us a little bit about, "You look really, really comfortable." That's, I don't know whether you should be allowed in here dressed like that. They'll tell us a little bit about their case, we'll discuss it, maybe have some questions for them, maybe not. If there are people here who want to be heard either in support or opposition to it, they will come forward, give us their name and address for the record, we may or may not have questions for them. We will discuss it amongst ourselves if we feel the need to do so, we'll call for a vote, and then we'll vote on each one in turn. First item on the agenda today is a receipt of the minutes from the June 14th meeting.
I do have one question or clarification on item number 11, which we engaged in some pretty intensive alteration or discussion on this item from up here. My notes reflected that we also agreed that the building height wouldn't exceed 50 feet and that the, in addition to the eating establishment, fast food and personal, oh, it does say personal storage, restricted to accessory use as an office. So, the only thing missing then would be a building height restriction of 50 feet. Does that sound right? Am I remembering that correctly because it was in my notes?
I actually do kind of remember that. Does everybody else agree? Can we make that change?
I'll go back and listen to the meeting, and if that change is needed, I'll make it.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And so?
I'll make a motion to receive the minutes. Second.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the June 14th Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Would you cast your votes, please? That didn't work.
Your other deals are outside.
Oh. We have a fairly lengthy consent agenda. These are items, I'm sorry, continuance is first, consent later. We have a fairly
We do have a few.
Fairly lengthy continuance list as well.
We do, and I'll read those in for the record. On your agenda, item B-39 for SP-508 is deferred to August 9th. Item B-40 for case PUD-1686 is deferred to August 9th. Item B-41 for case C-6996 deferred to August 9th. And item B-42 for case PC-10533 deferred to September 27th.
Is there anybody present who thought they were going to be speaking on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the continuances as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items, let me again, 39 through 42. Would you cast your votes, please? And they are continued.
We also received several new requests for continuance, so item B-30 on your agenda for case B-17 to defer to August 9th. Item B-31 for case SPOD-1064, also August 9th. Item B-32 for SPOD-1071 deferred to August 9th. Item B-35 for CPA-1802 deferred to August 9th. And item B-36, PUD-1687, also August 9th.
Is there anybody present who thought they were going to be heard on any of those items today? Would you come forward, please? I guess I should just ask, do you have?
It's for SPOD-1072.
I'm sorry?
For SPOD-1072, 1072. It's item number 33.
Oh, this is not going to be continued.
Okay, okay, we're good.
So, I'm not quite as confused as I think I am. Anybody else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the continuances as read. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 17, I'm sorry, 30, 31, 35, 36, 32. Would you cast your votes, please? Those are continued. Someone had asked specifically about a case that we continued. Mr. Webster was asking about case number 40, just to be sure it was continued, and it was.
I'll consider, if you're going to continue it, I'll wait until you continue it.
Okay, thank you. Now, the consent agenda.
Yes, there are several, there are 15 items on the consent agenda, and for the record, I will read them in. Number one is ABC-932, it's an ABC overlay at 1210 North Hudson. Number two is an easement dedication, ED-222 on Northwest 58th Street. Number three, easement dedication 223 on Northwest 143rd Street. Item number four is case PC-10535, a rezoning of 6807 North Robinson from R1 to I2. Item five is PC-10537 to rezone 2353 West Main from R1 to R2. Item six is PUD-SP-67, a specific plan for PUD-1633. Item seven is PV-104, it's to vacate a portion of the final plat of Lakewood, Section 8. Item eight is C-6997, the final plat of Anton's Landing. Item nine is C-6998, the final plat of Nichols Creek. Item 10 is C-6999, the final plat of Morgan Crossing, Section 3. Item 11 is C-7001, the final plat of Penn Highland, Section 2, with a note to make a correction from Commissioner Cravens. Item 12 is C-7002, the final plat of Highland Estates. Item 13, C-7003, the final plat of The Woodlands. Item 14, C-7005, the final plat of Afton Grove. And 15 is C-7006, the final plat of Oakdale Ridge, Phase 1.
When items are placed on the consent agenda, it generally means that they are non-controversial, they don't have any technical difficulties, there's not any protest to them, and for our purposes, they seem likely to be approved. We're about to vote on these as a block, and if it passes, which I'm sure it will, they'll be approved. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on any of these items? Sir?
Yes.
Would you come forward, please, and give us your name and address? What item is this?
My name is Leonard Holland, and it's item number 12, C-7002. I just had a question as to the exact access of the development and also how the water would be run. Maybe this is inappropriate to be bringing up at this time, or?
Not at all.
Okay.
If you'd like, we can pull it and hear it in turn and answer your questions at that point.
I'm sorry?
We can pull it from the consent agenda and hear it in turn, so.
Okay, I'll just hang out here.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve consent, Market, minus item 12.
If I could, just a couple of questions on a couple of the items just that I saw. I'm assuming, obviously, in number three, there's just a staff report error from case two that was carried over to case three, so 143rd Street. But there were two things. One was the open space issue in item number eight. The other was a public water main extension in item number four. Applicants are aware that those items will have to be dealt with at some point, right? I mean, it just caught my eye that those are things we typically discuss, and I remember one lot split issue involving a sewer main recently, so that was particularly heightened. Is the applicant aware that those requirements are in place?
Yeah, the staff report puts the applicant on notice that those items may come up at the building permit stage and they'll have to deal with those.
Okay, so they, okay, so they're giving prior notice?
Yeah.
Okay, that helps me.
Did you want to speak to that?
Item number eight, we understand, we acknowledge.
And then, what was the plat deviation reference in the staff report in item number 10? What's the question? Says the design does deviate slightly from the approved preliminary plat, although the overall lot is the same. I was just curious what a deviation is that's enough to reference but not enough to be material? I'm just curious.
So, in the, Jared Martin Development Services, in the preliminary plat, Northwest 97th Street, if you look at the aerial map, came over a little farther to the east and then made Morgan Crossing Drive have a much steeper angle down into the development, and then there was only one cul-de-sac there in Phase 3. Now, because of that change in Phase 2, Phase 3 now has two cul-de-sacs. So, that was really the only change there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it doesn't lay out exactly the same, but it, same number of lots and
Okay.
Anything like that.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that deviation wasn't something that would, at preliminary plat phase, a neighbor would be concerned about that would be, would not be overlooked at a final plat stage, so, thank you very much.
Good catch. So, do I have a motion and a second, or not?
I have a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 15, minus item 12. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved.
Do you want to hear these before 12, or do 12 and then those?
Yeah, let's do 12 since it's our consent agenda. We'll hear item number 12 first.
So, again, item number 12 is C-7002, final plat of Highland Estates.
Would the applicant, is the applicant present? Let's hope so.
Yes, I'm Chuck Twavel with SRB Engineering, and we're representing the developer. Our address is 100 Northeast 5th Street, Oklahoma City. And first of all, one of the questions he had was the access, which we're improving just a portion of County Line Road there, just up to our entry drive. County Line Road is just abandoned right now, and we're going to improve it to get access into our street and then the public street through the development. That's our intention for all the access. Originally, we had our street connecting with 104th, but that became impractical, so 10 or 12 years ago, whenever they started this, and they decided just to improve just a little bit of County Line Road. And then, the drainage, I mean, we're just going to put in bar ditches along the public street there, and so from the building lines forward, that will drain to the street and then up through the bar ditches. And then, the back of the lots are going to be left in their natural state, basically, and no grading improvements or anything on the back of the lots. So, they'll remain as is right now.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, sir?
No. Let me clarify, I own the 53 acres over there on the west of you, and my question was the exact axis. Will you be center lining your easement on the section line, or will you be going over there on the east side?
The street that we're proposing is centered on the section line. And so, we'll do half paving on the west side of County Line Road.
Okay, and then you'll be moving the fence over for the, to build the road?
It should be a fence at the statutory right-of-way, and we're not encroaching on that fence.
Well, as you mentioned, the section line is closed, there's a fence on the property line and a common fence between Sean Jones.
Right.
Whenever you build that road, will you be moving the fence to build the road, or are you going to put the road on either side of the fence?
There's still, you know, the 33-foot statutory right-of-way was not vacated, it still exists. And on our side, we're widening out 50.
Oh, okay, you were just going to go on 33 feet instead of the 66 feet of the road easement?
It'll still be 33 feet on the west side and then 50 feet on our side. So, we're adding on our side 17 additional feet.
Okay, you realize that there is a fence on the section line?
If it's going right up the section line, I mean, we did not put anything into our plans to, we're just going to take it out and put the road in.
Okay, so, I guess then you'll be contacting me whenever you plan on moving the fence?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's curious about. Now, your water line that you are, are you going to be running a water line up into this addition?
Yes, it's going to follow the public street, it does.
Okay.
So, it stubs off of, down at 104th Street and runs up to our entry and then tees off, and we're going to leave it teed with the cap on it to extend to the north whenever.
Will you also hold an easement on those final parcels so that the individuals on Coldstream Drive to the north will be able to tie onto that in the future?
That was not a requirement from the city to tie into it.
Oh, well, I'll just add, you
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask that you address your remarks to the commission rather than to each other. If you want to step outside and talk about this, we can come back and vote on it later.
Okay, let's step outside.
Okay.
For peaceful discussion about the application, of course.
I just liked what you said there.
No, this is cast. Okay, we'll come back to 12. Let's go on then to the items that are to be heard that require variances. The first of those being item number 17.
This is case DA-25388, it's a lot split deed approval for 1220 Northwest 4th Street.
Is the applicant present? Could you come forward, please? Give us your name and address for the record. We have done with 17.
Nicole Flint, Agent for Brent Irish and Irish Holdings. Address is 820 Northeast 63rd Street.
Tell us about your application, please.
The partnership has been dissolved, and to reconcile all assets, we are splitting this lot between the partners, and all it has on it right now is a cell tower, that's all it will be used for. Her there is current easements already in the location, so nothing has to be changed or anything like that.
So, you, although the partnership is dissolving, you have an amicable arrangement with respect to your access?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the variance.
I would move that we make a recommendation for approval.
Do you vary it?
Right. Recommendation?
We're approving the variance.
Okay, approval of the variance. Let's do that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance on item number 17. Would you cast your votes, please? And on the application itself?
Make a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Is that accurate? Are we approving a lot split deed? Or, we are. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 17. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to skip ahead to item 21 and then after that, 27. And item 21 is the preliminary plat of Saratoga.
Aubrey, actually, we need to hear the zoning before the plat, so that would be item 20 first and then 21.
Ah, since it goes with the zoning. So, we have two applications that go together. First, we'll hear case PC-10534, it's to rezone 2000 North Sarah Road from Double A to R1 and R2.
Good afternoon, Brad Reeves-Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. This is rezoning at 23rd and Sarah. It's 80 acres. Approximately 75 acres will be R1, 5 acres will be R2. They're in conformance with the comp plan. If you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns for the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I shall move. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 20. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
And item 21 is the associated preliminary plat.
This is a preliminary plat, it coincides with that. We're agreeing with all of the staff TEs. The item number one is a variance request for interconnectivity within the quarter section. When we first looked at this, we did look at connecting down south on to Northwest 16th. There actually is something in the staff report from the Fire Marshal's Office. I called them, and they're okay with the way it is without the connection. They didn't see our second point of access onto Sarah Road, so they're fine without the point of connection there. So, it's just a variance to the interconnectivity. We did provide a street stub to the north, we provided a street stub to the east, and looking into providing one to the south. That street is a half-street, it's 13 feet wide, it's on 25-foot a right-of-way. There is no ability to really go in and improve that. They have their mailboxes just on the side of, the north side of the road there. And also, there's a channel that separates us from them as you go back further. So, we couldn't really get a, we'd have to do our connection really far up front. There's also gas lines and a huge gas vault in the area, so we're requesting the variance to not tie into that.
So, what was the reason for not connecting?
That street's substandard. It doesn't have curbs, it's a half-street, it's 13 feet wide.
Northwest 16th?
Yes.
There.
I'll entertain a motion on the variance.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance of Section 5.3.1, D5 of the subdivision regulations for C-6991. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance, item number 21. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
If there's no more discussion, I'd move to approve the preliminary plat of Saratoga, C-6991. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve
Subject to the technical evaluation.
I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Saratoga, subject to the technical evaluations. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
And we're now going to hear item 27, which is C-6979, the final plat of Taylor Manor, Phase 1.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll, here on behalf of the applicant. So, this is the final plat of Taylor Manor 1, it's at the northwest corner of 18th Street and Council. It consists of three single-family lots on 2.87 acres, so each lot's just shy of an acre in size. The lots will all access Northwest 18th Street. Water is available along the north side of 18th Street, however, sewer is not available, and that's due to the elevation of our site. We're too low to gravity into any of the surrounding sewer. We've talked with the utility department and understand they're in agreement with that. And so, we do have a variance request for not connecting with sewer. We've also been working with the neighbors on some drainage issues in the area, and I think that we've got that worked out. We're going to provide stormwater detention at the north end of those lots. We're also including a large earthen channel beyond the east side of the addition to basically drain that area out and take it through our pond and where it historically goes. This plat does meet the requirements of the R1 zoning and subdivision regs, and like I said, we do need a variance request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? I do have someone signed up to speak.
Yeah, we have a letter of protest attached to our application as well. What's the issue with the drainage there?
That area along Northwest 18th Street is pretty flat, and it has some historic drainage issues after rain. There's some ponding of water and such in some of those yards and around on the street. The developers previously had gone in there and placed some fill, and we're changing a little bit of that drainage where, now that we're involved, we've gone back and we're going to basically pick that up along the east side, and that's where it historically has gone. There's actually a small piece of asphalt where the low point in the street is. So, it won't necessarily solve the existing problems, but it'll make sure that we've got a channel size sufficiently to handle a hundred-year storm event coming through that area.
I'm sure you've looked at it. What's causing the larger issue here? Is it just a lack of infrastructure for stormwater runoff and things like that? I mean, is it?
Correct. Over in that area, a lot of the streets where water crosses through, they don't have bar ditches and they don't have curb and gutter, so you get, there's almost 40 acres that are draining to our site, and that spot on our southeast corner of our property, right there on 18th Street, is kind of that low. And then, that area down in there is just fairly flat, so it just doesn't drain real well. But we're putting in a channel, we've submitted those calculations to Oklahoma City, and like I said, we'll provide detention on the north, too. I believe they have some drainage issues already on the north. We're providing detention to make sure we don't increase the flow onto them.
Okay.
Mr. Stannick, are you here? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Don Stannick, 7905 Northwest 18th, which is the property just to the east of this. The drainage problem is a lot of water from 44 acres. The only low point out of all of Christian Jones Estates is through this property here to the, enters on the southeast corner and goes through the center of the north edge of it and further on down into other areas. We do not protest the three lots, that's fine with all the homeowners in there, but we want to make sure that the water, for heavier rains, does flow continually through their previous engineers and times. I've been here five times on this property with previous engineers, and they've put in a lot of dirt, and they've put in concrete that stops it. That's in the past. The plans that they have now appears to me to solve the problem if they, I haven't seen the full details of how it exits off of Northwest 18th onto the southeast corner. The complete easement plans were just submitted to the city engineers to be approved. I said I looked at it, that, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it looked pretty good to me. If the city engineers approve those easement plans and have a good flow of the water from the street into the southeast corner, then we from the street into the southeast corner, then we will withdraw our protest of the water problem. We do ask that a homeowners association for the three lots be established to maintain that easement.
Thank you. Are you planning to do a homeowners association for the lots? How will you maintain easement? That's really the question.
So there'll be a note on the plat to, where either the, the homeowners themselves or a homeowners association will be required to maintain the easement. So one of the two will, will be required to maintain. So we'll have a private drainage easement run along the east side of the property and also one on the north side of the property. So there will be note to maintain it. I don't know if they're gonna do a homeowners association or whether they're just gonna have individual homeowners maintain since it's only three lots. So, and we have worked, been working with Mr. Stannick. I appreciate his patience and, and so I think we found a solution that I hope works well for him.
I don't wanna overpromise, but staff is very hopeful that the, that the plans that they're working on will really improve the problem in the area, so. Commissioners?
There's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the variance to section three point four, point five D, subdivision regulations for C sixty-nine seventy-nine.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the variance, item number twenty-seven. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Make a motion to approve the final plat of Taylor Manor, Phase One, item C sixty-nine seventy-nine.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the plat of Taylor Manor, Phase One. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
I do. Although they're not back, let's, let's keep going here.
Okay, we'll resume our normal order under items requiring separate vote going to item sixteen on ordinance for public hearing and recommendation by the planning commission regarding home sharing.
Can I, before you start, JJ, can I get just like a show of hands? How many people here today are wanting to be heard on this item? I mean, are here with respect to this item, not necessarily wanting to be heard? Okay, thanks.
This is the public hearing today on the ordinance for home sharing. This is an amendment proposed to address uses such as Airbnb, among others. Just briefly, the way the ordinance works is that we created a use unit or definition in the zoning code where there is none now for home sharing. It's up on the screen. It's proposed that home sharing be a conditional use. Anywhere residential use is permitted. That means the ordinance establishes four conditions that if those conditions are met, that home sharing would be eligible. What we are asking the commission to do today is make a recommendation on the ordinance that will be, that will accompany the ordinance to the city council for their consideration. Have a number of staff present to answer any questions you have on the ordinance. That's it.
Commissioners, do we have questions of staff that we wanna pose? I have a few, but you go ahead.
JJ, so the city manager's office directed the city staff to develop this process. What, what was the catalyst for this ordinance coming up at this time? Aside from the obvious that it's occurring currently?
You'll permit me to answer for JJ since I'm from the city manager's office?
Seems like a good fit.
Yeah. Laura Johnson, Assistant City Manager. The real nexus of the ordinance is that as home sharing became more of a prominent use, more and more residents began to take advantage of that. As we were receiving just a handful of complaints, we found it difficult, if not impossible, to proceed with a citation process for this use in residential areas because our ordinance was not specific enough. In consideration with the city council about how that should be handled, it became apparent that the general consensus was that it should be allowed as a use. And so that's where the ordinance draft came from. We worked with the legal department and consulted with other cities around the country. We've been working on this for three years, and I would say that in that period of time, there have been a fair number of changes in home sharing ordinances around the country. People have tried things. Some things worked, some things didn't. And so we've had the benefit of learning from some of those things and tried to make sure that we were making an ordinance that was both enforceable and yet provided us with an opportunity to have a license that would provide some accountability and allow for revocation in the event that someone was not complying with the city's regulations. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It, it does. So what are the limitations? This is maybe more of a question for legal, but what are some of the limitations of regulating a home sharing ordinance? I mean, these four elements that were given that are the considerations for being able to obtain essentially a license or a permit, excuse me. What are some of the things that you couldn't do that would more stringently regulate this?
At, at this time, there's nothing in the ordinance that you couldn't do in your home in a residential area.
At this time, there's nothing you could, so you can't do this presently legally within our ordinance?
Presently, there's no language that allows or disallows this. Specifically.
Okay.
In a way, your questions kind of touch on the issues that, that keep poking at me about this. First of all, let me say, I really appreciate all of the work that has gone into this. I know it's thankless and it's been going on a long time and, and I do appreciate that. The pieces of this, of this particular proposal that are troubling to me, that's not exactly the right way to say that, that, that I, I can't quite resolve in my mind, I guess, are, first of all, there is a mechanism in place if you want to do this, and I guess that would really have to be like an S P U D. You'd have to go through that process. And the thought has been expressed that it's just so expensive and cumbersome that people don't do it, but there, it's not like we don't have any way of doing Airbnbs if, if someone wants to follow the process in place currently. It's just that people don't. I think the, the impetus for the development of the ordinance being, you know, a few, a handful, as Ms. Johnson said, of problematic instances of these point to, for me, one of the things that's lacking about this proposal, which is there's no language in it that would prevent the use of one of these sites for like a mini special event center. And I guess it is, I'm not an Airbnb person myself. I've never done this, so I, I can't speak from personal experience, but I understand that it is not uncommon for people to rent these facilities and then use them for parties. And that, that is the way in which they become problematic to their neighbors. Loud noise, people coming and going, you know, that kind of thing. But when you actually look at what the mechanism for addressing those kinds of problems are, there's nothing in this ordinance proposal that would prevent that. And you're left with the enforcement mechanisms that are already on the books. Disorderly conduct and, you know, violations of the noise ordinance and so on. So what, what this ordinance proposal would add to the mix doesn't seem to me to be very well tailored to the problem that, or problems that pushed for its creation, if you will. And, and on the other side of the balance, I'm sure you've all gotten the same emails I've been getting from people, various neighborhoods, not solely the historic ones, but, but very much the historic ones as well, are very concerned about the blessing that putting this ordinance in place would seem to them to be giving to a commercial enterprise within their neighborhoods. And I can understand that. The, the prevention of commercial encroachment into the historic districts has been a huge, huge issue over the years. The process of community building that is part and parcel of the adoption and maintenance of an historic district, you know, is, is very much a concern to the folks that live there. I happen to live in one myself, actually. And I know that it's, it's not just about, you know, brick and mortar. It's about, you know, knowing your neighbors and having that relationship and, and maintaining that relationship. And there's a lot you have to give up to own property in an HP district, a lot of personal choice that you have to give up to live within the framework and rules of an HP district. But people make that trade-off voluntarily. And I think I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the concerns that they have about the introduction of sanctioned commercial use within their boundaries. So I, I have some real concerns. I, I don't see any language. I had asked staff if they could look at drafting language that would at least restrict the use of these centers, of these properties for mini event centers, if you will. And also whether there was any opportunity to segregate funds received from the licensing for enhanced code enforcement, which I'm sure everybody in this room knows is an issue in the city of Oakland City. But failing either of those, and, and even if, if they were added, it would still be left with the issue of the introduction of that commercial use into these historic neighborhoods and into, into any neighborhood, if you will. So the question that, that I came back to again and again is what if we just don't do anything? You know, I think currently we have a mechanism in place for reporting problems to the city and for the city to take action with respect to the noise ordinance or disorderly conduct. That would not be changed by the adoption of this ordinance or enhanced in any way by it that I can tell. The fact that people would have to get a license that we could then revoke, I mean, if you go open a tire store without a license, I assume the city has a way of taking action to shut that down. So if you're operating any other kind of business without a license, I assume the city has a way to shut that down. I'm sort of not ready to vote on this ordinance today unless I vote against it, I guess, is where I come out. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners about their view.
That was, my question was, is there any mechanism in place that we can revoke these licenses?
Um, yes, there is. There's a licensing ordinance that will go along as a companion item to the zoning, and it does allow for the revocation of the, of the license.
Are they perpetual or are they renewed?
They're renewed annually. They're one-year licenses and they're renewed annually.
One of the big problems I've had, I guess, with the whole discussion has been this idea that of, of commercial use. I think, I think we are viewing short-term rentals as uniquely different than long-term rentals. And if we're defining short-term rentals as a commercial use, it's hard for me to not make the connection that then long-term rentals as well would be defined as a commercial use. And I struggle then to say that, you know, making, making money as a, as a home, or as a, the owner of a home through a long-term rental and a short-term rental are, are totally separate. So I don't necessarily view this currently as a commercial use. And so that part of the argument to me is hard to, it's hard to make the jump. I think specifically on the, on the ability to revoke licenses to then in some way enforce some type of language, to me, this whole process seems very necessary. Unless I've misunderstood, if we do nothing right now, then there is no real way to police any of these, you know, current Airbnbs or any home sharing. It seems like we're very fuzzy on, on what our options are right now. Do we have any clarity?
No, I will say that you could argue that it is not allowed currently because we have a specific definition in the hotel ordinance that would define anybody that rents more than two rooms as a hotel. And we have a specific use unit in the zoning code for hotels, which would not be in allowed use in R one. So I think you could argue that.
A lot of these, though, are, are only one or two rooms, right? And if...
And it would depend on how many they were renting, I guess, if it would meet that definition.
So, so I guess if in, in these neighborhoods, your, your home sharing just one room or, or two.
Does the ordinance limit it to that? Does this ordinance limit it to one room or two?
This ordinance doesn't, I guess, I'm not sure if I understand the question right. This ordinance does not limit it to one or two. If you rent, I mean, it just kinda depends on what building codes. If you're renting more than two rooms, then you, I mean, you are, would be home sharing, I guess. I don't know if I'm following the question that you asked, but.
Well, I think, but...
A lot of times, you rent the whole house. Most houses are more than one or two rooms. It's gonna be, you know, three-bed, four-bed.
What will come into play is how many, what building codes may apply as to far as how many bedrooms you're renting. If you were renting four or less, then you'd just be under the residential code. If you had five or more, then you would be under the commercial code.
All right, then you'd have fire exits.
Right. And we've defined that, though, right? We've said that if it's more than five, you are a hotel and you are required to meet commercial codes. And at that point, I would consider that a commercial, truly a commercial business as well, connect back to the other question. I guess going back, just my, my, my question back to staff is, if, if we change nothing, do we believe that we can enforce what's currently happening in, in this, in this sense? With the question of these, these home sharing properties?
I guess enforce in what way is the question. My understanding is that this doesn't do anything to change the ability to deal with, for instance, violations of the noise ordinance or violations of...
I understood that it did. So I guess that's the question.
So your question is a trick question. It's, yes, we can write a citation. The question is whether or not prosecutor's office will file the charges, and that's what I cannot respond to. That's what I, I've had one case that...
As current?
Right. The way it's currently written. I have one case that was filed and the, and the person who was filed on paid their fine. I've had another case where the prosecutor declined to file.
What, what is that fine?
I'm sorry. I think it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and it can be assessed for every day. I mean, you can write a citation every day.
I think it's a five-hundred-dollar fine, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I would defer to the lawyer on this. I would defer to the lawyer on this.
But with the new language, we feel that the prosecutors would not decline.
We don't have any control over that. Prosecutorial discretion lies with prosecutor.
Correct. But we believe that we've written something that will give them more to deal with there.
Gotcha. I feel like that's fairly clear.
And I think before it was hard to even find out where a lot of these places were. And this, we hope that by having them getting a license and being, you know, have their address and a contact person and those type of requirements, that we would be able to regulate it easier.
To me, that alone is, puts me at this moment in time, right now, today, on the side of approving this. Because I do think it provides more avenue to control these nuisances, or the potential nuisances. That's how I process this information.
Well, let's hear from those folks who are here to speak to us on this topic. I have just a handful of people who are signed up. I should have told you at the very beginning of today, when I was going through our process, if you want to speak, there are forms like this on the table outside. You'll fill one out and give it to our clerk, and I'll be able to call them and order. Suzanne Broadbent, you're up.
Hello, I am Suzanne Broadbent. I live in the Putnam Heights Historic Preservation District at 3625 North McKinley. I do appreciate the city manager's concerns. Obviously Airbnb and VRBO have been around a while and they're probably here to stay. This ordinance, however, I don't think quite gets to the problems that anybody has brought up about the Airbnb. First of all, I might point out, it's not a home-sharing ordinance because there's no requirement in this ordinance that the property that is to be allowed to fall under this new use be a home. And we know that in other cities, and probably here, there are many properties that have been bought and are simply ongoing Airbnb uses, or VRBO, or whatever the company that one chooses to go to. So.
I mean, I'm sorry, you mean that there's no requirement that it be owner-occupied as well as?
I don't see it.
When you say that it be a home, I guess is what I'm trying.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, owner-occupied. Yes, yes. I don't see that in this ordinance. Perhaps I'm missing it.
No, I don't think so.
But I'd like to take us away from this language that's up here for a second. First of all, it, to me, does not address the problem. A $25 or whatever the charge would be for a license is not going to be much of a deterrent. People will just simply go down, pay $25, get their license, and move on doing exactly what they're doing, in my opinion. The problem, the guts, the gist of this ordinance for the neighborhoods is, you might say in the fine print, that is in throwing the door wide open for a new use in the residential areas. And as Commissioner Powers pointed out, there's already a process for new uses in a residential district. And it involves filing, paying an application fee, and most important, notice to the neighbors and an opportunity to be heard. This ordinance throws that out the window as far as the home-sharing, for want of a better word, goes.
I apologize. Do we mind if, like, we address each point? Because I feel like a lot of times we will hear several points when somebody comes up and will miss the ability to kind of discuss something. And I think that's worth discussing.
Whatever the commission wants.
I guess for me, like, I don't think that the $25 fee to register is meant to be a deterrent. You'd mentioned it as a deterrent. I don't think that the city sees these as, as like, something we want to deter just because they exist. I think it's just a filing fee.
I think the point is that if the argument is that the ability to revoke the license is a method of enforcement, then, you know, the value of the license itself, you know, has some weight in that equation.
Well, I just thought, I think what's interesting about the word deterrent is that if we force people to come through and get a spud to home-share, that is what it is, right? We're saying we don't want these by having that.
I agree with that statement, any more than we are saying to people who want to open a store and have to come get C3 zoning, that we're saying we don't want your store here.
I don't think it makes it commercially viable to rent a room short-term in your home if you're required to get a spud.
Well, a spud would be a permanent rezoning of the property, less than until someone came in and rezoned it again. So you're paying a one-time fee to do it. I'm with you. The intent of the filing fee is not to be punitive or to create a deterrent, it's to create a registration. And the teeth of the ordinance as it's drafted comes in the requirement of the homeowner or the property owner to maintain the property in line with applicable building codes and fire codes. That's where, if the city has a registered list of where these properties are, they can go out and effectively ensure that those codes are being met. There is no mechanism now. I could rent a room in my house for 30 days on Airbnb and it disappear, and my neighbors may not know the difference. So I think that's, I think that's where the teeth comes from. I think that's the difference. But it is, I don't, I'm with the chairperson here in that a rezoning application is permanent. So you come in one time, and if that rezoning is there, you could have a home-shared, you know, allowed use within your zone property for forever, right?
Fred, but we don't require this of the long-term rental, right? Like, you don't have to come.
It's not a change in the use, though.
It's the same. To me, I'm with you, it's the same, long-term and short-term.
Someone's sleeping in a bed.
Or is renting a house.
I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
So someone is renting on a short-term basis, there's a reason that hotel and lodging accommodations are a commercially identified use. These people are, and I'm not saying that this is bad, but they're transient in nature. So they're using that property for a short term and moving on. If someone's long-term renting in a home or an apartment, their kids are in the school system, they work in the area, they're residents of the community, it's entirely different, in my view. That's much more of an intended residential purpose than allowing someone to come in while they're in town visiting Oklahoma City, rent in a neighborhood that they're never going to come back to and be able to do something there that is, has historically been restricted to commercial areas for a reason. Those are two different things, in my view. I don't see long-term rentals and short-term rentals as the same thing.
I agree with that. So, go on.
Well, yes, on short-term rentals, Commissioner Cravens makes a very good point, that's very destabilizing for the neighborhood. We have long-term rentals in Putnam Heights and in Heritage Hills. We know who those people are, they're involved in the neighborhood. But if you have a house set up that, you know, every two weeks, every week, every three days, somebody different is in there, that is a totally different kind of situation for the neighborhood. You know, I'm a newbie at this historic preservation stuff. I've only been at it 25 years. And I don't say that totally tongue-in-cheek because the point I'm trying to make is, a lot of people worked really hard, beginning over 50 years ago, to keep these neighborhoods, well, actually, to bring them back and to rescue them from boarding house use, from multifamily use of many of the beautiful two-story, three-story homes. And this certainly has the possibility of throwing open that use, which would be very difficult to control in these neighborhoods as well as all the other neighborhoods. So a little more teeth there would be helpful if we're going to have an ordinance. The Airbnb, there are a lot of problems. I won't go into them. They've been addressed very well in the letter from Edgmere Heights, and there are folks from Heritage Hills here to speak as well. I just want to quickly point out that we know Airbnb grew from, you know, two roommates renting out their bedroom to a huge, multi-billion dollar industry. Kudos to them for being successful. But theirs is not the only interest here. And it's the city planning commission, the city council's job, and our job as residents to make sure that we are protecting our city. And this ordinance, in our opinion, does not do that and in effect endangers it by making this use widespread all over the city in residential areas without much of a way for neighborhoods to have much of a say in controlling what happens under it. And I would just add that the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, and many other publications carry articles very often about problems with Airbnb, short-term rentals in not just other cities in the United States, we should learn from their experience, but all over the world, Japan, New Zealand, et cetera. This ordinance doesn't show me that we've learned anything from their experience when they threw open the door to Airbnb without some kind of protections. So to me, it seems we have a process that exists now for people who want to make this use. Maybe we need another one, but we need some kind of process. And this is not it, in our opinion. The fix for us is pretty simple. Just take the historic preservation districts out of this. Take that language out that adds this as a use to the historic preservation districts. That may be too broad a fix for you, I don't know. It isn't for us. And I don't know what your options really are today. If you can send it back to staff for, with instructions, whether you can send it to the city council with, you know, caveats, I will be glad to work with whoever. But we do really strongly urge you to give a lot of thought for what throwing open this use does to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the points that she made that we didn't really touch on in our discussion is that issue of notice to the neighbors and an opportunity to be heard. The ordinance in front of us does not have a mechanism for that. These neighborhoods, you know, if you live in a neighborhood that's got a homeowners' association, you have that option available, I'm assuming, to prevent this kind of a use in your neighborhood, but maybe not. The point is that with respect to those neighborhoods that are used to having some input with respect to their neighborhoods, the HP districts just being one of those, you know, there's no real mechanism here for that. You go down, you apply for a license, you get it, and, you know, nobody knows until you're up and running. And I think that's problematic for me, especially in areas like the HP districts and others that have, you know, worked so hard over the years to establish and maintain that kind of input over things that are going on in their neighborhoods.
Quick question for, on the final point here in the ordinance, all appropriate fees and taxes must be collected and paid. Is there a mechanism now, and this might be a question for Ms. Johnson or someone from staff, but is there a mechanism now for us to collect these taxes on these as in our present ordinance and regulatory set?
The hotel tax ordinance provides that the taxes will be collected for sales tax and hotel tax. The sales tax is collected by the state of Oklahoma. And the ordinance does specify that it's two or more rooms. So if you're renting one room, hotel tax does not apply. Sales tax, however, does still apply. The state collects that for the city.
Yeah, but there are others, but Airbnb is not collecting those taxes at the time.
Yes, they do.
They are collecting and they are remitting those presently.
Yes, they are.
By agreement with the city?
Yeah.
And you're working on agreements with the other?
We're pursuing whether or not other entities will have a group agreement. The property owner or license holder is individually responsible for remitting those taxes. But if they choose to work through an association like Airbnb, they can.
Well, and so that's my question. So is a part of this ordinance as well, from the city manager's perspective, the city manager's office perspective, is that this licensing requirement would also give better teeth to being able to collect and ensure that those taxes are?
Absolutely.
Which passed away heavily in the city's consideration and our recommendation on this. I mean, this is going on, and collecting appropriate taxes is extremely important to the city. They're essentially losing money by not being able to do that. The registration that this ordinance provides would make that a whole lot easier to do than relying on Airbnb or the next Airbnb to do that on behalf of the city.
Although, it was my understanding that that was specifically not part of the reason that this ordinance was initiated, that it was not about the collection of the taxes. That was not one of the concerns that.
Well, I probably didn't include every feature of consideration in my discussion earlier, but we did have some concerns expressed to us by the hotel industry about not having a level playing field with Airbnb and other short-term rental companies, that they didn't have to be liable for the same taxes because we're having difficulty finding them.
Yeah.
I'm going to call these in alphabetical order, just to be fair. So Bill Carey.
It's good to see all of you again. I'm Bill Carey. I live at 326 Northwest 16th Street, right about in the middle of Heritage Hills. I'm president of the Heritage Hills neighborhood. And we want to just reiterate that the size, the uniqueness, the age, proximity to entertainment and restaurant activity make the homes in Heritage Hills probably the most attractive to short-term rentals in Oklahoma City, along with a lot of the other historic neighborhoods. But those qualities also make them most vulnerable to the possible and well-documented abuses. There are many examples of these abuses associated with short-term rentals. In looking out for a uniquely positioned neighborhood, such as Heritage Hills, our neighborhood is very concerned about sanctioning this. No one has yet to identify any benefit to the neighborhood as a whole from potential STR activity. No benefit to the fabric and the viability of Heritage Hills. Is proposing STR activity for a property not a change of use, as you've been talking about, for that property? Using it as a small hotel rather than a single-family residence? Shouldn't permitting it follow the same procedure as with any other zoning change? Isn't short-term rental in the residential neighborhood commercial encroachment? Given another name, preventing commercial encroachment was the heart of the promotion and the passage of the preservation ordinance that was passed in the late 60s. It was offices and businesses then, as well as boarding houses in our neighborhood homes. How is an STR different? Aren't both commercial enterprises? An event house was recently proposed for a single-family residence on Northwest 13th Street. Residents opposed it on the grounds of late-night activity, noise, and parking, and it's been withdrawn. Is there much divide between potential STR activity and event house activity? We have numerous houses in our neighborhood that would make great event houses. It appears that the city, that we as a city are behind the curve in getting a grip on STRs as compared to the rest of the country. Many cities that had gone headlong with STRs now appear to be trying to rein it in, regulate it, and even ban it. The list is long, but the most comparable to Oklahoma City is Fort Worth and Arlington, Austin and Denver. In Fort Worth, STRs are prohibited in solely residential neighborhoods. Austin has capped a number of STRs with no live-in owners. They're granting no new permits. Other cities seem to be finding that the issue is much more complicated than the proposed ordinance would indicate. The question has been asked, well, what do your residents think about STRs? So we, as a neighborhood, mailed a written survey to all our residents, over 400. I can pass out a copy of this, so you might.
[inaudible].
179 of the 402 people returned the survey. Forty-five percent of the neighborhood. Now, another 45% of those want to prohibit STR. Seventeen percent want to allow it. Another 38%. Another 38% want restricting amendments to be made if the proposed ordinance allowing STRs in Heritage Hills is passed. Possible restrictions are listed on there, just as a sampling for you, with the number of votes in parentheses underneath them, so you can kind of get a feel how people think about this. By adding option one, which prohibits it, and adding the vote for option three, which asks for amendments, restricting it, my takeaway is that 83% of those that responded to this survey in Heritage Hills are not in favor of the passage of this ordinance. Thus, Heritage Hills opposes this ordinance as written. If the planning commission and city council feels that the ordinance is in the best interest of the city, then we propose that the legal minds, both ours and those of the city, get together and fashion a means for exempting Heritage Hills from its application. I've been told it can be done. Thank you. Any questions?
Doug Eason?
My name is Doug Eason. I live at 3400 North Harvey, which is in Edgemere Park, and I am president of the homeowners' association. Edgemere Park Homeowners Association has sent a letter, which I hope, I think, was attached, outlining the reasons why we are opposed to this. Chairman Powers has enumerated a number of reasons, Bill Carey and the lady from Platinum Heights. So I will not reiterate all of those, except to say that our neighborhood has very narrow streets, and this would create a terrible parking problem because we have seen more than one car show up for a B&amp;B. The other thing is, is the ordinance as written is vague and overly broad. It does not limit the number of B&amp;Bs in a neighborhood. So we, in the historic districts, are going to be looking at more applications for B&amp;Bs than any other area in the city, I believe, especially Edgemere Park. We're close to downtown, we're close to the Med Center, and we probably would be looking at more applications. They're not restricted. The other thing is, if you get a license for the purpose of earning money, that is the commercial enterprise, and that is a slippery slope to other commercial enterprises in these protected neighborhoods. There's no restriction on that. The owner host shall be required to comply with any applicable building and fire codes. They're not required to comply with zoning codes, which prohibit commercial enterprises. Why was not zoning codes also put in? So, I don't want to reiterate all those things that have been mentioned, they're all very good, but this is too vague, too overly broad, and is going to lead to a lot of problems down the road. It does not, like I said, it does not restrict the number of B&amp;Bs we can have in our historic neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of Mr. Eason? No? Thank you. David Ingram?
I have six very modest rent houses. I'm an accountant by profession. I teach at Rose College also. About three years ago, I converted two of the rent houses into B&amp;Bs. And let me tell you what happens with the Airbnb system. Unlike all of you, who are very genteel and civilized, when you make a mistake in the Airbnb system, you live in dread fear of that mistake. The two houses that are now Airbnb operations, or whatever you can call them, the yards have to be mowed and edged, the paint can't be peeling, everything has to be perfect. Why? Because when the guests arrive, and they're maybe already in a bad mood about something else, they're going to find the slightest detail to maybe jettison the reservation if they're not completely happy with it. I've had it happen a couple of times over the most minor of things. So you live as a host in dread fear of that house not being perfect because you can suddenly lose $1,000, and just like that. Just like that, they'll come in and go, "It's not quite..." I had a couple from Europe, and this house was spotless, is spotless, and it's an older house, it's been restored, but it's, I left one door in the laundry area as I found it, just because I wanted people to see what the rest, and there's a note on it saying, "I didn't want to Disneyland this house to the point that it was totally changed." But it's inevitable that you do change it. But the patina of the old house, I'm the second person to have owned this house, had a charm in and of itself. So I left that, and then I noted that he died gardening outback at the age of 97. Well, they considered that gruesome, and canceled the reservation. So that's the eggshells you're walking on as an Airbnb host. Now, flip side of it is this. The guests also are walking on eggshells. Why? If they come in and trash your place and get reported, they may never rent from Airbnb And I've had a couple that came close, but I didn't. This wasn't anything on the exterior, but just leaving too many open cans of pop or potato chips on the floor, it's not going to be a big deal, but when they leave the place very unclean, because most of the time, these are professional people from the east or west coast, they're in here for conventions, they're from Europe, they're a high class of people, higher class of people than neighborhoods my houses are in. Now, this isn't Heritage Hills and Nichols Hills, of course, but for many of these Airbnb operations, they're in neighborhoods that they have dramatically raised the standards of the house, like mine did. So while I know I'm not supposed to say this because some of my fellow Airbnb people, I don't think like this opinion, but I think there would be room for something in the historic neighborhoods, something that could be done for them. But most people are not buying half million and million-dollar houses in Nichols Hills and Heritage Hills and turning them into Airbnb's. It's just not happening. But in those, many of the neighborhoods that surround some of these neighborhoods where the homes are more modest, you'll see an improvement rather than a degradation of the real estate. But that's been my personal experience.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Eason? I'm sorry.
Ingram.
Mr. Ingram. No? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm out of sync with my alphabet here. Micah Andrews?
Hi, I'm Mike Andrews. I'm at 909 Northwest 16th Street in Mesa Park. I actually wasn't here for this today, but none of the other board members showed up. So I am on the board of Mesa Park. We did vote on this issue. I'll try to be brief. The Mesa Park, the board would prefer that there be some more restrictions in this ordinance. The majority voted that they were for home sharing and the passing of this ordinance if there was no more consideration for more restrictions. As a homeowner in Mesa Park, I think home sharing and Airbnb and those programs are an important part of our neighborhood already, whether they're following ordinances or not. I think, I'm also a small business owner and a restaurant in the plaza district. Those programs, I think, are important for continued growth density and tourism in our areas to help provide vibrancy to our urban core. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions for Strandries? Thank you. Brooks Altshuler?
Thank you. My name is Brooks Altshuler. I live at 1526 Claussen Drive in Heritage Hills, grew up in the neighborhood, and moved back from out of state, back to the neighborhood. So I have a lot of contextual experience. And I just wanted to add a couple of quick things. One is, there was a city planning commission document in 1967 that was the underpinning of the founding of Heritage Hills, and I would urge you to look at that again. It talks about commercial encroachment on single-family land use areas leading to blight in the decay of a historic neighborhood. Fifty, 60 years later, it's the place to live, and the city touts it often. Now, through technology, we're looking to do the same thing by having, abandoning the single-family use, bringing in a commercial use, which it is, if you're taxing it, it's commercial, which leads to a whole host of things. And fundamentally, it's a land use, and everyone said there's a process to amend that or change it. And I would respectfully submit that that, there's a process, they should use it. I can't open a barber shop, but this ordinance says, well, this commercial use, which is the equivalent of a hotel, however defined, right, temporary use, is okay, but another commercial use isn't. And oh, by the way, you've made the biggest investment of your life, which is your home, single-family ordinance, and then it's just changed by a whim. And so that's what I'd like to say. The other point, I think the gentleman, everyone has said it here, but I'd like to highlight, this was a study done by CBRE that has, 81% of Airbnb's revenue comes from whole-unit rentals, those rentals where the owner is not present during the time of the rental, rising 78% from the prior year. Hosts with 10 or more properties are generating a quarter of all multi-host revenue. They analyze 13 markets. So what that says is, it's, again, a business, and it's becoming a big business. Multi-unit owners buy it, they don't move their families in there, they don't care what the schools are like. These are temporary units for people that are coming to enjoy the city. That's what the hotels are for. And so I'd like to submit is that this, it happens, no one's going to send a SWAT team to break up someone renting a home. But if it becomes clearly legal, that enables people to go in a commercial endeavor and get a bank loan, and start buying up homes, and use this as a business. And if you have a business, you're not going to keep up the place because it costs money as much as you would if it's your home, right? And it leads to a whole host of issues. So I'd just like to point those things out. It's a city document for the historic one, and then the CBRE studies are available online as well. Thank you.
Do we, do you have any questions for Mr. Altshuler? Thank you. The only thing I would take exception to in your remarks is that there's no whining going on here, and this is not something that's being done on a whim. Three years' worth of effort's gone into this process, so.
Well, as a taxpayer, I'd like to say that there are a lot of unanswered questions. In a lot of cities throughout this country, historic districts in New Orleans, there's article after article, and I would respectfully request the staff look into that a little bit more and take those into consideration in the areas that we're talking about, that the city not, it's not us making up, the city has decided for the past 50 years that they need to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Does someone have something to say? Did I hear from someone else? No?
I'm sorry.
Would you come forward, please, if you have something else you wanted to add? Then I have one more person signed up to speak.
I don't want to interfere for the time, but I would like to just tell you once again, the two that I turned into Airbnb's make more money and have to be perfect. Have to be.
We understood.
Yes. So this notion, now, I mean, conceivably, I guess, in a place like New Orleans, maybe in a popular district of town, a large corporation would come in and buy an entire block. That's a problem.
Thank you. The five-minute rule will be strictly enforced.
Oh, boy. Rob Littlefield, 1148 Northwest 56th Street. I think it's really important, first of all, to take care of some facts. If any one of us were to go onto Airbnb.com, you would see like somewhere between 302 or 304, 306 listings if you were to Google OKC. About three or four months ago, a group of Airbnb hosts, a group of neighborhood leaders, some historic preservation neighborhoods, some ordinary neighborhoods, and citizens, just general citizens interested, we got together and we started talking about this. And we studied these statistics. Of the 306 listings, when you go to OKC and you read, we read every one of them, they're Norman, they're Midwest City, they're Yukon, they're scattered all around, and we were able to whittle down to what we thought was the inventory of Airbnbs in Oklahoma City to about 200, maybe 250 at the outside edge. And then we studied VRBO, HomeAway, we looked at the other more common space-sharing listings. And what we discovered when we looked at those was they were more or less duplicates, duplicate listings of what Airbnb listings were. So what we're looking at in Oklahoma City in the space-sharing world is possibly as low as 200, maybe as high as 250 properties, whether it be a whole house, a bedroom, however folks want to list them. There is absolutely, positively no concentration of those in one part of town over another part of town. They are scattered everywhere. And I think that they're scattered everywhere for various reasons. One reason is, I think that there's a heck of a lot of interest in the equine events that go on down at the fairgrounds. There's folks that may have family nearby. There's every kind of reason why these things are on the marketplace. There's not a trend whatsoever where they're all going down to Heritage Hills or near downtown. I think that's really important to understand. I don't think there's any more Airbnb listings in Heritage Hills than there could be in Sequoia Neighborhood, is my example. So that's, I think, very important to understand. This is not an epidemic. Oklahoma City is fabulous. It's a wonderful, fantastic place, all kinds of reasons to live here and all kinds of reasons to come here. But we're not a destination city like Honolulu or New Orleans, for example. They've got hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of more space-sharing venues in destination cities. So I'm not seeing the threat that I'm hearing from some folks. So having said that, to reiterate, those 200 to 250 places can be a whole home in Sequoia Neighborhood, they could be a really cool above-the-garage space in Heritage Hills, they could be unique places that property owners have decided that they want to put capital improvements in those and make them cool, and give them a purpose besides an above-the-garage space on a garage in an HP neighborhood that has no use at all. The folks that use Airbnb and the hosts that provide the spaces are under a mutual scrutiny. And the mutual scrutiny is, if I'm a host... is, if I'm a host, my place better be nice because I'm going to get a bad review if it isn't. And if my guest doesn't behave my house rules, they're going to get a bad review. The next person that sees both of those reviews makes decisions about whether or not I'm going to go there, or whether or not I'm going to let them come here. There's a built-in quality control with that. No host is going to provide less than the coolest, neatest, cleanest-looking place because they want to keep it rented. And vice versa, we're going to rent to great people. People that are signed up for Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, there's a certain, there's certain qualifications that they have to perform before they can even become a user of Airbnb. There's a prerequisite. It's very low level, but right away, it says that these people are, they're pretty good folks. I think you made a comment, they just come, they stay, they leave, they never come back. That's not the case at all. I've got guests that their ninety-year-old father lives two blocks away, they come four or five times a year for a week. And my neighbors meet these people. And they do become a fabric of our neighborhoods. Finally, and I hope I can think of it, with respect to, what's the word that I'm looking for? Not maintenance, not prosecution, help me with the word. Enforcement, thank you very much. With respect to enforcement, there's, in Oklahoma City, there's between thirty-four and thirty-seven percent of the housing stock, the residential housing stock are rental properties. Between thirty-four and thirty-seven percent of all the residential housing stock are rental properties. There's no specific ordinance or licensing for those folks. Some landlords own a hundred homes, they own five hundred homes, they own apartment buildings. That's a business. That's running, to us, that's running a business. That's the way we look at that. The enforcement is the same for both, and it's already there. Noise, drunkenness, late night, yard parking, all of those things. There's already in place enforcement for those. The fun part about the consensus of this group is that we're not, we support the ordinance. There was nobody in this group that we worked with that said, oh, I'm totally opposed to that. We all said, we would be happy to sign up for this, happy to do it, or nothing at all. So, I'm done. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is, I've worked my way through my list. I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Speak now if you ever hold your peace. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a few more questions. Mrs. Johnson, what are, early on in this process, you talked about the potential stakes of either not doing anything, or trying to be even more restrictive. I think it was something about Airbnb coming to places that had tried to restrict them, and going to the state legislatures there, and basically overruling cities' ordinances.
Right. There were a lot of considerations as we were looking at what actions we might recommend. We did evaluate, in fact, we put on our website that people should apply for a variance or a zoning, an SPUD, and no one did. The cost is something associated with that. I mean, it's not inexpensive to do that. But we did consider whether or not that long-term rezoning that is not revocable would be the best outcome for the neighborhood anyway. You know, that eventually, someone else could come into that property and use it for that use. We wouldn't have a revocable method for preventing that. But in terms of the legislative effort, y'all are probably fairly familiar with the Uber situation, where we worked very long on an ordinance that would provide regulations for Uber, and then they went to the legislature and got municipalities preempted from that regulation. And so, we are working a balance here. We have heard from both Airbnb and the Hotel Association, we're trying to provide for a level playing field, but without making so many regulations that we would encourage a municipal preemption of any regulation. That, I don't think that anyone thinks that would be in the city's best interest to have us be preempted long term.
Did you consider a special permit as an option?
Yes.
Why ultimately did you side against that?
Same rationale with the expense. It really, at some point, the question was asked, what are we trying to prevent here? What are we trying to regulate? And when it comes down to regulating the owner's use of their property, it becomes very difficult to make the argument that we're preventing something that, as Mr. Littlefield pointed out, is different from a long-term rental consequence.
The other part of mine is really not a question for you, by the way.
Excellent.
Thank you. Well, just a comment, because we've heard quite a bit from HP neighborhoods. And I understand totally that, you know, you guys have done a great job in your neighborhoods. Obviously, they're beautiful, everybody loves them, people come there for trick-or-treating, you know, people want to spend time in those neighborhoods. What has not, what I've not been able to do is make, in my mind, to be able to divide them from every other neighborhood in the city in this instance. I don't think that HP specifically makes those neighborhoods more special than any other neighborhood whenever it comes to the question before us. I am willing to talk and debate about all of the merits and demerits of this ordinance in regards to every neighborhood. But it does not make sense to me to only consider HP neighborhoods as some special entity that is, that will suffer more than anyone else in any neighborhood where this might be an issue. I agree with Mr. Littlefield in that if you're a very normal neighborhood, just a non-HP neighborhood that might be near the state fairgrounds, this, you know, it wouldn't be, I think, crazy to say that you might also be at risk if there were to be an issue. And so, I'm, I just, I have to, in my mind, throw that out, the HP argument. Now, I think if we want to consider all of the discussion today as it relates to every neighborhood, I think that is much more fair. So, that's all I wanted to say in regards to that. I still, after all of today's discussion, I still feel like the ordinance, in my understanding, is a step forward towards being able to further regulate potential issues. I agree that in the end, there is some, there is some difference between a short-term and a long-term rental. But I don't think, to me, that it's, the potential negatives are material. I agree with Mrs. Johnson, I agree with Mr. Littlefield in that sense. So, I think during this process, if we had instead approached, how might we, how might we just craft this a little differently to protect against potential issues, then we might have had a more productive discussion. But in the end, it's all come down, every meeting, to how do we prevent the ordinance? And so, I don't feel like we made the progress that we could have made. In the end, I'm currently still in support of this, and that's all I have to say.
I would just have to say, I didn't hear either Ms. Johnson or Mr. Littlefield say that they thought that those considerations were immaterial. They may feel like the benefits outweigh those considerations, but.
Well, just to clarify, I meant, I think Mrs. Johnson just did say that the potential negatives of a short-term rental and a long-term rental are really the same for a neighborhood in regards to noise, you know, nuisance houses, the same issues that we might, you know, enforce against just a typical long-term rental, or even a homeowner situation. That's what I heard, unless I screwed something up there.
We won't put her on the spot and ask her for that. I didn't, that's not what I heard. But further discussion? Are we ready to vote on this? Do we have instructions we want to give staff about amendments or additional language we'd like to explore? Do we think we're ready for a vote today?
Mr. Carey said something when he was giving his presentation about the other markets that I'm curious if Ms. Johnson could provide some comment on, because obviously, they've spent a lot of time here. But I think it was Fort Worth, I don't remember if that's exactly the place he said this was the case, but where there were live-in ownership requirements for these types of properties. Did you guys explore the legalities of that?
So, I have a whole file folder full of information from other cities. I can't recall specifically.
Sure.
What's happened with Fort Worth. I will tell you that nearly every city that had home-sharing ordinance five years ago has amended it in some way in the last couple of years. And some of that's because of problems that came to light, or because in some cases, they felt like it was too strict. They loosened the regulations. In Nashville, for example, they went to the owner-occupied requirement. And immediately, the home-sharing coalition went to the state legislature and filed legislation to preempt the cities from having any control. So, that's the kind of balance that I was talking about. We've looked at other cities. I mean, cities have unique problems because of unique circumstances. Nobody's exactly like Oklahoma City and.
Right.
But we did look at some that are more similar to Oklahoma City, like Fort Worth, and like Nashville, and places like that, although one could argue that they both have more destination traffic than we do. We tried to evaluate the pluses and minuses of each of those things, but there is a significant concern that we not be preempted from regulation. So, that did guide some of it. San Francisco and Boston are having a terrible problem with affordable housing. And so, they're having, in Boston, people who have Section 108, or pardon me, Section Eight, housing are now vacating their apartments and subletting them for Airbnb purposes. And so, they're running into issues like that. San Francisco, I'm sure everyone is aware, is incredibly bad affordable housing problem. And they're trying to limit the gentrification of neighborhoods that Mr. Carey actually alluded to, where people would be buying these Airbnb properties, in very well-to-do and well-respected neighborhoods, and preempting the residents who would normally occupy those. It was hard to extrapolate those experiences into Oklahoma City's experience with this. And some of this is based on the calls and complaints that we receive in the city managers and mayor's council offices regarding this, which are very few. I can tell you that we've received very few complaints about home-sharing properties.
On the preemption point, which I totally understand, specifically, in the example of Nashville, as to the coalition, the Airbnb coalition went and had the legislature change and preempt, was that on the grounds of, like, alienability of property rights? What is the basis for that preemption there?
I can't speak to that.
Don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. I think, at least, I mean, as far as my recommending vote is concerned, to me, that's a really important factor. Is this a first step toward a broader base of regulation that allows the city to identify where these are located, and allows them to ensure they're remitting the appropriate taxes, so we can have nicer streets and better kept parks, and things of that nature? That's really, to me, a logical first step. And I think this ordinance does achieve that. I think what concerns me about the ordinance is, without some of the teeth that, you know, I think a more stringently drafted proposal would have, I think there are still opportunities for abuse. And I don't know that, I don't know that the city's in a position to do much about that until they see where those abuses are and can react to them in kind. I think it's a logical step forward. I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's a logical step forward. And I'm very reluctant to support it, but I do, because I think this is an evolving issue. I think we have to take a first step. And I think this is a first step that, again, will allow the city to identify, what does this problem really look like? Where are these properties? And what's needed to better regulate this within our city? Tougher question for the city council than us, but that's, those are my thoughts.
Comments? Comments? You know, I just can't get there on what we've got in front of us today. To me, the issue of the owner occupation, while I understand that it is a huge point of distinction for folks who operate these short-term rentals, it seems to me that it is an absolute line of demarcation, also with respect to whether or not this is a commercial enterprise. As long as there's no mechanism to restrict it to owner occupation, there's really no question in my mind that it is a commercial enterprise. And it is subject to the possibility of, you know, widespread, you know, massive ownership of these units. And to me, that's just very different from a couple of guys renting out their sofa, you know, over a football weekend. And I understand very much the limitations on the city's ability to regulate these things without attracting the attention of the state legislature. That's happened to us on more than one occasion, and it's problematic. But I just can't get there on this today, so.
I would echo your thoughts on, I mean, to me, that's why I asked the question, the owner-occupied portion of that would make a difference to me in terms of feeling very comfortable supporting the ordinance.
And to reiterate Ms. Johnson's comment that they've had, you know, very few complaints about these, this, to me, the offsetting negative impact, and I would say to Commissioner Hightower, it's not all of the HP districts, it's just that they are kind of a unique example of neighborhoods that have had to, you know, organize and consistently be active, and to, you know, do the ditch-digging work of coming to hearings like this to sort of defend their boundaries and borders over a period of, in Heritage Hills case, fifty years. I mean, it's not that there's something unique about them with respect to other neighborhoods as far as this ordinance is concerned. And in fact, we have been advised by our legal staff that there's really not a mechanism by which we could just let the HP districts opt out. That's not really a thing, at least not individually, I'll put it that way. So, I'm just not there yet. I would like to see some additional work done on this. I'm not sure that it wouldn't be possible to draft something that could work. But the introduction of this clearly, in my view, commercial enterprise into these residential neighborhoods, especially older neighborhoods that do not have mandatory HOAs, and therefore have that kind of structure and mechanism in place by which they can address a lot of these issues, I'm just not there. Anybody else? If not?
I don't share the same. Maybe I'm different. I've got three Airbnbs right now reserved for me across the country, and I use them all the time. And like Rob was saying, they're regulated like crazy, like worse than hotels. I leave, you know, trash around or something, I'll get a nasty message, or, you know, and that affects me from renting from somebody else. And they look at me, and they're like, oh, this guy, he goes in there and parties all the time, and, you know, doesn't use my house for, like he's supposed to, and I won't rent anywhere again. On the flip side. On the flip side, you know, I take care of it like it's my house. Take the trash out when I leave, take the lens off, throw them in the washer. Everybody's got a house rule. They follow them. If you don't follow them, there's no room for error. Every house that I've been to has been nicer than the house that's next to them, in the neighborhood, the yard, the flowers, you know, everything, the paint, everything about it. I just, it's opposite to me. I've got houses in my neighborhood that are rental houses that are huge problems, and we can't do anything about them except for report to the city, you know, on code violations or their grass is too high or, you know, they've got 50 dogs or stuff like that. That's just, you know, the same old thing. I don't know. I just don't see the concern.
Our role here is really just to make a recommendation on the ordinance as it's presented, right? I mean, that's ultimately all we're doing here.
Right. You can make a recommendation. You also could add something if you wanted specific language or something like that to recommend to the council, but...
No, I just, well, I was just, not trying to conclude the discussion, I was just going to say I think we're not holding this process up. We can send a recommendation forward and let city council address this. We're not holding that process up if we don't make a recommendation, is what I'm trying to confirm. Correct?
You need to make a recommendation one way or the other or not make a recommendation and vote to forward it on to the council.
Got it. Okay.
Madam Chairman, real quick, I don't need to repeat too much. My concerns are mostly the same as yours, with the one exception, actually, in a way I agree with Commissioner Heisman, that I don't know that just the historical preservation districts, they are in a way different and it's more important for them, but just slightly in my opinion. I think it's important for all the districts, and I don't put a whole lot of weight into it being that much more important for the historic preservation. The second thing, a lot of folks keep mentioning Airbnb, Commissioner Privet, you just mentioned it. I think we're all, probably some of the concerns out here, you don't have to be on Airbnb in a reputable company. This can be somebody that posted on Craigslist, they put a sign in their yard, well, maybe that's not allowed, but they can, I think we talk a lot about the rules that Airbnb has, but we can't rely on those companies because somebody else may use a blabinate, does not matter what your standards are, and want it a little too much, so that's all I have.
I think that's a good point.
Well, we have a couple of Airbnbs in our neighborhood, and I have to say they're probably the best-maintained properties in our area. I think it's important to remember this is not a recommendation of whether you're going to have an Airbnb in your neighborhood. It's just a process by which we can better police and control what happens at those Airbnbs. And as Commissioner Cravens has noted, we have to start someplace, and I think this is a good beginning. Not to say it's written in stone and it can't be revised or that the city council can't take further action on it, but I think it's a good start.
I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation if we're ready.
I think we are.
Okay. I would recommend that we recommend approval to city council of the ordinance before us.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance as written. Cast your votes, please. It does not pass. So...
Should we move it to city council without a recommendation?
I think we should. That would be my, that would be what I would support. I will make a motion to forward the ordinance to city council without a recommendation for planning commission.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second to forward the ordinance to city council without a recommendation. And I'll just say philosophically, that's a little bit difficult for me, but in this particular case, I think I'm going to support that. That's what we're going to do. We'll give, we're going to take five and, thank you so much for saying. I really appreciate it. To let the room clear and...
Should we start again? Okay, we're gonna circle back to item number 12.
Yes, I'll be able to answer his questions and concerns. He said he's not for or against it, he just wanted to know some answers.
Okay, so you decided he didn't want to sit on these hard benches any longer? Well then, I will take a... I will take a motion on item number 12. Remember, this was on the consent docket to start with.
I make a motion that we approve the final plat of C-7002.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the final plat of Highland Estates. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
We're gonna pick back... There it is. We're gonna pick back up with item number 18 on the agenda for C-7,000, the preliminary plat of Park Place Heights revised.
Good evening. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Meeks is also here. This is probably looks familiar to you. We've been here before you, before on this plat. It was a preliminary plat that was originally platted with a little bit larger lots. The original developer had some issues with family crisis and ended up having to sell the property. The new developer is retaining the configuration of the streets, grading utilities because much of it had been done. And we're making the lots a little bit smaller west of our Far East Street. The lots on our east side meet the city's criteria of being 75 percent of the... 75 percent or 7,500 feet of the adjoining larger lots. And the lots to our east are one acre, or not one acre, but three-quarter acre. So I've had... We did have a phone call from the joint property owner to the west during construction of the first phase that's in place. We did run across some issues with drainage on Morgan. Unusually, our client agreed to replace a structure under a section line road because the drainage there was so shallow. But we could not retain a easement from the adjoining property owner, nor could the city. They made an effort to try and get it done as well. So the system we've designed has ended up with bigger pipes, shallower pipes as a result of that. But I understand she sent a letter. I don't know if anybody's here.
I have a whole bunch of people signed up to speak.
So then to finish that, that answers the drainage issue. Like I said, the north infrastructure's in. It's just the lot size issue. And we'll obviously have to change out some utility connections as part of the construction to allow for the revised final plat that is scheduled to come before you at your next meeting. This is zone R1, straight R1, and we do meet all the criteria, and we do agree with all the technical evaluations.
Forgive me if you've already mentioned this, but why are we doing private streets?
Gated community.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do we have any questions of Mr. Johnson while we've got him at the podium? No, then I will call for... So I have a bunch of people here to be heard on this item. If you would, please, just not repeat too much of what other people have already said. And there's too many of you to get alphabetized. So, Moni, is it Limley or Moni Limley? Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Moni Limley, 4101 South Morgan Road, Oklahoma City. I want to address the water, runoff water. On the addition across the road from me, it's been run over on my land, been erected there intentionally. And it has ruined my land. I mean, it's just there. And they talked about... Mr. Pace showed it to me on June 5th last year. I asked him where this was to go, and he said to the creek. And there is no creek in the middle of my pasture. So then they talked about a pond. There was a little pond there, but it's, of course, it's covered up and everything else is covered up with water. So now, the latest thing is, they want to do something on there by that water and make it spread it out. I don't want it spread out, I just want it off. I mean, spreading it out would just make more water, cover more of my land. So I don't want that. But there's surely some good solution, something that could happen here to do this. And so I think there'd be more water when all those houses are built over there, and there'd be no more soil to soak up the water. Because by the time the streets and the sidewalks and houses are there, water, there'd just be more water to come down and come over onto my place. Because they've got eight-foot openings for it to come over onto my place. So anyway, this is... If anybody can look at it anytime they'd like, that would be fine. But I have some pictures if you'd like to see them.
And which property is yours? Is it visible, your property, is it visible on the map? So you're the one that owns?
Have you spoken to the city or to the applicant about the... If you go back to the microphone. Have you spoken to the city or to the applicant about the issue of widening that... What do you call them? The culvert? Have you spoken to someone with the city or with the applicant about that?
Where the water comes, the curls? This was intentionally put in. It's eight feet on either side of the road, and so it comes under the road and comes onto my place.
Right. Have you spoken to them about that? Have you spoken to them about that?
No. Mr. Pace was in charge of it, but he recently sold it, is what I understood.
Ah.
I didn't know there was a new owner until this week.
Okay. Do we have any questions of Ms. Limley?
I just want to know what to do about this because it just ruined my land, and I'd like for them to find some other solution. And I know there's got to be some other solution.
Ms. Limley? Ms. Limley?
Engineers that the city has, they probably would find something.
Ms. Limley?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Has anyone talked with you in the past about a temporary easement?
They've already bought it. That's so they could put this thing in. And they said they're... Well, they were gonna widen the road, but now they say, no, they don't have the money. They can't do that.
Well, specifically about removing some of the silt for better drainage. Has anyone talked to you about that from the city or from the developer? Sorry. Has the developer or his representative talked to you about a temporary easement to clear some of the silt for better drainage?
Mr. Johnson, is this the lady you need to be speaking to? It is? Do you want to go outside and talk to her right this minute, or do you want us to continue your case? Or what do you want us to do?
I'll have to respond.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry?
You want me to go sit down?
No, he can move over there.
So the previous developer, Mr. Pace, as she mentioned, met with her, as did Michelle January, in the Public Works Department when we ran into the issue of needing to increase the depth of the pipe under Morgan Road. I was not in attendance with the Public Works Department, but they reported to me and asked me to come in and talk about, would our client be willing to grade a ditch to lower across their property if they could gain an easement? And we agreed to do that. The easement never came about, and that's where it ended. They accepted our project. It's in the ground. It's built. So the question about the drainage, you can see the pond, the entire, most of the 40 acres to our east drains onto us, and we have to take it. They have two flumes that come onto us, as well as a street, southwest 41st. That, all that water comes onto us, and we have to deal with it on site. And the only outfall is on her property. That's the historic outfall at Morgan Road, of which we put in a new pipe when we built the first phase.
That's the natural flow.
That's the natural historic flow.
Is there a detention pond anywhere around here or proposed?
Not... We're not proposing one. It wasn't required by the city. There's no structure flooding downstream.
Okay, so that ship is sailed, is what you're telling us? That you have resolved that issue to the best of your ability?
Without an easement. And if Ms. Limley would be willing to grant a temporary easement, I'm sure that our new developer would like to get the water off of his property as well. And it would take a day's worth of dozer work to grade that to drain. But it does increase the depth to allow more water to get into the natural flow off of our property. Right now, it's just stuck. You go out there after a rain, there's water on both sides because it can't go anywhere until that pond to the west trickles down.
So our consideration of what's before us today does not impact that one way or the other?
This is built.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Do we have any questions of Ms. Limley?
Do you understand the issue of the easement? Do you understand the issue of the easement as discussed here?
So that would be a no. I think Mr. Johnson will take that on. You'll discuss that with Ms. Limley, won't you? Thank you. Thank you.
He's a good person to talk to about that.
Yeah, he'll get with you, and you can work with him. Jason, is it Robison or Robison?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jason Robison. I live at 3817 Hunter Glen in Oklahoma City. I am one of the property owners to the east of this proposed change. I'm here today to object on the increase in density of the properties for a couple of reasons. One of them being the change in utilities or the increased demand in the utilities on that site. The water, stormwater, sewer, were all designed in accordance with the original plat, so increasing the density would increase the demand on those infrastructure. The... I do have a comment about the stormwater discussion that was just had. The existing structure that's underneath Morgan that was just built, the developer's correct, it's in place, it's complete, it's done. But increasing the amount of lots will increase the amount of hard pavement, which will increase the flooding problem that they already have and they haven't been able to deal with. So every time that it does rain, Morgan Road does flood, and that problem's gonna persist and actually get worse. So that is a major concern to us. As well as the existing flooding that occurs on the north end of the property. On both the northwest and the northeast corners of the property, the stormwater systems aren't correct and also flood. So these are all major issues. Again, increasing the amount of lots has a negative effect on the water supply in the area. It wasn't designed accordingly, so it's going to decrease the flow, it'll decrease the pressure, and it'll have a negative impact on all the neighborhoods around this new property. For those reasons, I object. The electrical and gas distribution is also a problem. Again, the existing infrastructure was not designed for this amount of lots. It was designed for the original plat. So unless this stuff has been redesigned, reevaluated, and potentially improved, then you're gonna have a negative impact on both the electrical system and the natural gas system.
I don't think that this... The city typically has requirements for a certain amount of water flow test or, you know, requirements for the amount of amperage to a house, that kind of thing. So I'm... These won't get approved without that issue being solved.
I certainly hope not. The issue here today is revising a new preliminary plat that increases the density of the neighborhood from approximately 80 to 90 lots to 150. So increasing the demand by one and a half times. So going through this process would be a moot point if it would never get approved by the city in some manner. It does not change the fact that the infrastructure that's in the ground now wasn't designed for this kind of demand. So while I agree with you in theory and philosophy, the infrastructure's already in place. And what the developer is suggesting is to increase the taps on that system by at least 50 percent over than what it was designed for.
I'm gonna ask you to speak to this issue, Mr. Johnson. Is that a thing?
Yeah, he's correct. There's minimum standards. But the minimum standards the city has for border main extensions, for minimum sewer size, are far in excess of what we would put in a quarter section. And so we extended public sewer mains that are minimum eight-inch in diameter, well exceed the capacity to take these additional lots. Same with the water. We're zoned R1 by right. You could put up to 7.2 lots per acre. Obviously, we're not squeezing that many in there. We're probably at three. The design of the stormwater sewer, we're all done under the R1 guidelines, which assumes a certain percentage of coverage, whether we build an acre lot or a quarter acre lot. The calculations for runoff are the same.
What it sounds to me like, just gonna call it what it is, while it's frustrating, I think the city's infrastructure is lagging behind the development pattern here. And I think in large part, that has to do with this particular area, a lot like an area where I live, or a little north of where I live, is growing so rapidly, the city can't keep up. Which is, that happens. I mean, it's just one thing has to lead the other, and they don't always go the right way. We see those discussions in here a lot, unfortunately. But I am curious, on the flooding issue, so there's no area retention here, and there's no requirement to do it. So you've complied with it, the city has to let you go forward. There was an easement acquired to build this damned culvert on the other side of the road. You're gonna have to walk me through that one more time.
Right, and I'm not familiar with that. I think the lady that spoke earlier maybe was approached by the city to do road improvements to get the additional 17-foot right-of-way. I'm not sure. But we granted the additional 17-foot as part of our rezoning. That property on the other side of the street is still at the statutory 33. The easement that I spoke of was a temporary private easement that would allow us to do grading on her property.
I get it. And without that, you can't enter her private property. You've gotta have that in order to go on and grade it down so it'll continue to drain out.
And because the city wanted us to put a bigger, deeper structure in, not necessarily bigger, but deeper structure, they attempted to get the easement so that we could do the grading and lower the pipe, which would mitigate some of the flooding on Morgan Road. But Morgan Road is just at a grade that is just barely above the pipe that's in the ground. And so it will flood. It does flood.
Understood.
Real quick on the utilities question, just jump back to that. It sounded like the utilities are adequate, though, not inadequate, right?
No, the utilities, to Mr. Johnson's point, are in line. I mean, our staff report provides the subject site is adjacent to a 16-inch water main in the street right-of-way. We've got an eight-inch sewer line. I mean, these things are referenced. And in addition to that, the design of the preliminary plat conforms to subdivision regulations. So it meets the requirements. It's... I want to make sure we create clear lines of distinction. When a developer is responsible for doing something, we should hold them accountable. When they're not responsible for doing something, we shouldn't let them become accountable. And in this situation, he has done what's required. This developer and the engineering work have done what's required. It's that the infrastructure here is not able to support it, and we have a, it sounds like, a drainage problem that's occurred for some time that is certainly gonna be exacerbated by future development, but it is being done in line with the regulations, which is all we're supposed to look at. So...
I understand. And I would take exception to a couple of things, if I may, without disrespect. Mirabella has two detention ponds on it. They're not just drainage structures. At the front of the property, we have a large detention structure on either side of our acre.
Tell me if you would, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Mirabella is the neighborhood that you live in?
To the east.
That's to the east. And on the south side of that...
We have, on the south entrance, we have a detention structure. It does drain further to the west, that's the natural flow, as was mentioned before. But we have detention structures in our neighborhood. This particular neighborhood has not designed with a detention structure. It was designed with the stormwater system to push it out across Morgan into a non-existent drainage structure. As the owner on the west side stated, there is no pond or creek or anything over there to accept the water. So this is causing a flooding problem. They do have the capacity, as it stands now, to improve this situation by creating some sort of detention structure on site. That's one of our concerns and arguments, is that it doesn't currently exist, and they have the opportunity to make it exist, to improve the problem. But what they're suggesting is, this problem was dealt with, and it was resolved. It wasn't resolved. The original design was put in place, it didn't work to begin with. That's the issue with the stormwater. And again, no disrespect to you, sir, but just clarifying those points. Our developer put in detention pods, and then it drains on off to the west over. It's a detention weir, is what the outflow is. Theirs is not. It stormwater drains over to a ditch along Morgan Road into a box structure that goes underneath Morgan Road that the previous developer, Pace, did install. And as this gentleman mentioned, it wasn't installed correctly because it floods right at the culvert anytime there's any rain at all. So the problem will persist, and it actually will be exacerbated because they're increasing the amount of paving by increasing the lots.
Yeah, I understand. They're also dealing, as it were, with some of your water, right? Because the natural flow, the way that land's gonna throw it off.
Well, by design, the engineers that designed Mirabella, it holds it. In a stormwater event, it holds it for a period of time, and then it trickles off. It's not an amount of rushing water. We have large basins, both in the middle of our neighborhood and at the front of our neighborhood, to hold all the rainwater that we get initially, and then it trickles out.
I understand.
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. This is just absolutely clear as mud to me. What I think I know is that while you don't have any obligation to resolve existing drainage issues, we, the city, Oklahoma City, require you not to exacerbate them. Is that correct?
Correct. But, I mean, we're downstream from their neighborhood. We do have two large common areas that a natural stream trickles through and gets into the storm system that goes under Morgan Road. And we can use those as detention facilities, and we can include that in our application.
I think that might be helpful.
I had to check with my office to make sure that they were not impeded by a blue line.
And then, one more time. With respect to the issue of the existing water, sewer, electrical, and gas, I mean, would the addition of 50 rooftops to this area affect that in any way, shape, or form?
No. I mean, our experience with the public utilities, OGN, AT&amp;T, ONG, they'll bring whatever service they need to serve the houses. If that means they gotta add a transformer to a pole somewhere, that's what they'll do. The infrastructure that the city controls, that we have to adhere to, we meet the criteria to develop this as straight R1. And your staff report says that.
Okay. So, and when you say that, you mean it could be much denser than this?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, he is correct. They design it to a minimum basis of standard. The original sanitary sewer was also calculated in accordance with the original lots. They're increasing it by 50 percent. I would argue to want to have those calculations validated because the original stormwater pipe was for 90 to 100 lots, and now we have at least 50 percent more capacity going into it. So while originally it was designed correctly, you've added more demand to that sanitary sewer system.
I don't think that's how that works. You don't design them for 90 houses. You design it for the development... You design it for the development of...
You have an efficiency factor. Yes, that's correct. But they don't design it for that neighborhood to increase. When a final plat is complete, and ninety homes in that neighborhood, that's all the demand you're ever going to have. And what this gentleman is asking for is to change that design and footprint, but the utilities are already underground. They've already been designed for the original kind of lots.
But that's my point. They're not designed for ninety lots. That's not how that works.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to provide the calculations before the final plat's heard to this gentleman. I'm sure the staff would support it, which the final plat's set to be heard at the August ninth meeting.
I mean, in any event, the city has to sign off on that. It's not, you know...
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'm a licensed architect, and I've worked with Oklahoma City for many, many years. I am familiar with the process. This is a real concern. This isn't a homeowner making up an issue. I'm very aware of the process, and I tried to identify actual real concerns to increasing the density to this amount.
Okay.
So, just please take that into consideration when you hear my points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Myrick. Oh, we're sorry. Kristen Richter. Did you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Kristen.
No, you've got to come to the microphone first.
I've got a big voice. My name is Kristen Richter. My husband and I live in the back-left corner of Mirabella, which is the large pie-shaped lot just to the east of this development. I am representing four other neighbors that were not able to be present, but we all have the same concerns. For one, I can address the flooding issue. That back-left corner, when it rains very hard, the water actually goes up to the curb in front of our house and onto our driveway. We have nowhere for the water to go, and they have not done the correct, I don't know what you call it, but the concern for flooding. It all dumps to the big, the far-right top corner lot. It's just a giant hole of water after it rains, which is directly behind us. So, they're going to have to do a lot of work, I guess, on the flooding problems. Number two, I'm just going to go ahead and say it. This whole entire area is an executive-style home. We're concerned about putting small cookie-cutter houses on these lots. These lots were cut in half based upon what they originally were, and I actually brought... But, like, when we built our house, Tim Pace, I believe, was the original developer, he had a large billboard up saying, "Go to this website." It was originally supposed to be gated. Is it still gated?
Good point, Ash.
I would like that answered.
You need to address your remarks to us.
Hi. It was supposed to be gated. They were supposed to start in the low three hundreds with a minimum square footage of twenty-two hundred square feet. We would all like for that same type of home. That's all the houses to the north. There's Walden Creek at the corner of Twenty-Ninth and Morgan, then Walden Estates directly behind us, which butts up to the northern edge of this development, and then us. They're all the same. They're all executive-style houses. They're all custom-built houses.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that means, executive-style.
They're all more than about two thousand square feet. You're not going to be able to put a two thousand square foot house on this lot, which is what they originally were supposed to be.
Go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, you're fine. That's my whole argument, is that we want to make sure that the character of our area remains the same. That's what we're wanting. We have no problem with the way it's currently zoned. We have no problem with a gated community, low three hundreds, twenty-two hundred square foot minimum. We're great with that. We want it to stay like that.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Richter? To staff? We have a policy with respect to lot sizes adjacent to other lots. Does that come into play here?
Yes, and they meet that. The policy is that the lots adjacent to larger lots should be either seventy-five percent of the size of that lot, or seventy-five hundred square feet. And Mr. Johnson said this did address that.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, can I get answers from him as to whether it'll be gated?
We'll get answers from him.
We'll speak after.
Mr. Johnson, you did indicate earlier that the community's going to be gated in response to my question about the private streets.
Yes, I did. And I was going to ask, when we were done with our discussion, mention to you that that was the original development, was private streets. It was going to be a gated community. The new developer would prefer it to be open, public streets. And so, we were going to ask for that amendment to our application to allow it to be public streets.
Oh, so, not private streets?
Not private streets. You asked that question earlier. I spoke errantly, because the original plat was private streets.
Okay. Okay. So, with respect to your question about the low three hundreds, we don't really do that here. It's not up to us to decide what people sell their houses for. We have, as I indicated earlier, a policy with respect to lot size, and they meet that. So, we don't have the ability to require them to make their lots like yours, to make them, you know, match your neighborhood.
Even though that's what they were originally supposed to be?
I don't know what "they," I don't know what that means. I mean, what people who sell property say about what it's going to be in the future very often changes.
I think I can represent everybody here that none of us want that. This is what we want. We want the original. So, that's my argument.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon in Amber?
We've got a vast deal completed for the whole park now, and we agree with everything that we agree with. There is only a...
Why don't you come up here and tell me that? Give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Amber Crossley, and I live at the first lot at the beginning of the neighborhood in Mirabella. So, I bought, we bought our house...
So, I'm sorry, southwest Forty-first, where it goes through there?
Uh, right off of Forty-fourth and Morgan. So, the first lot there into the neighborhood on the left. We bought our house last year in March. The realtor for our builder told us that the neighborhood behind us was going to be similar to our neighborhood. So, we bought with, under the impression that it was going to be the same kind of neighborhood. All of a sudden, now we get a letter in the mail saying there's a new developer, and what Kristen said, I don't want to repeat and waste a lot of time. We don't want that. I mean, you guys wouldn't want that building behind you when you are under the impression of having a similar neighborhood, so we oppose.
Nathan Richter has also signed up.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, thank you. Thank you for hearing us today. We appreciate it. I'll be brief. I just want to kind of book in some of the comments that have already been made. We've heard about minimum requirements within the city and their regulations, and we've heard about minimum standards, and we've heard a lot of talk about the bare minimum requirements. You know, the bare minimum requirements don't set a precedent for what a community is looking at when they're developing neighborhoods such as Mirabella, or such as the neighborhood that's intended to be developed to our west. As an example, in the nineteen eighties, the minimum standards for development of cars did not include airbags. Now, it'd be asinine to buy a car without an airbag, because they provide safety and they provide security. In a similar fashion, the City of Oklahoma City has passed a comprehensive plan for the development. Included in that comprehensive plan is the idea and the policy that would reinforce the character and the quality of existing rural development. I would argue, at least at this point, that the vast majority of the neighborhoods existing currently are rural in nature. The executive-style lots that you heard about earlier are oversized. The reason why is because those lots are alluring to folks who want space, folks who want a rural feel. By adding additional lots to the neighborhood to our west, we are taking away from, if you will, the rural character of the neighborhood. Ms. Limley was here earlier. She got up and spoke to you. She owns the farm to the west of the neighborhood that's proposed. There's another farm, you can't see it in the diagram, but there is a large farm to the south across southwest Forty-fourth. That's an operating farm. There's a large farm to the east of our neighborhood in Mirabella. That's an operating farm. It's a rural area. We want to maintain the character of the rural area by maintaining larger lot sizes with the larger homes, so that we have the rural feel, despite the fact that there is going to be some urban development. Specifically, within the comprehensive plan I'm referring to, it's Sustain OKC Point Eleven in your comprehensive plan, that talks about maintaining the character and the quality of the existing rural developments, and to provide ability for some very large lot development in some areas which are unlikely to receive infrastructure in the short term. I believe the Honorable Mr. Craven's brought up the point that rapid growth, sometimes it happens, but it doesn't have to happen just because we have minimum regulations. It doesn't have to happen because we have a planning commission that can put the brakes on these types of issues and these types of developments, so that we can develop and maintain the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. It doesn't have to happen because you, as the commission, have the control to make the developments exceed minimum standards. We never want to be mediocre in our developments. We would rather be above average if we can. And meeting minimum requirements is simply that. We're just meeting minimum standards. We don't want minimum standards in Oklahoma City. We want above-average standards. We want exceeding the standards. We want to excel in our development. And doing that by maintaining the character would require the original plat, which are oversized lots and larger homes, in a rural setting that provides us space, something we can't get back once the increase in the number of homes happens. We'll never get that space back. We'll never get those views back. We'll never get the character back. Our plea to the planning commission is to revisit this and allow a dialogue between us and the developer to maintain the character while allowing the development to go forward. As you would hear, there's simply no objection to the original plat. It's the revised preliminary plat that people have a problem with, and that's because we're going to lose the character that we've invested in, and we've spent time and money developing in our neighborhoods that's going to be at issue moving forward. And with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Mr. Richter?
I would just say, with all due respect, I understand not, you know, not liking what might be happening next to your property, but, and our subdivision regulations have a lot of weaknesses. We're going to visit those soon. But I don't want this to come off like it might sound, but, you know, if I lived next to you, if I was this R1 property right to your west, I wouldn't have wanted you guys to happen. And so, there's a process, there's a, as Mr. Craven said, there's a continual, you know, this is how development goes. And you don't get to tell past a certain point what people can do on their property. This meets the regulations that we have in place, and in that sense, it's hard for me to buy the idea that you guys maintain a rural character in some, you know, meaningful way, more than this development will. So, that's just my one comment on that.
I'd also point out, just to be clear, because you brought it up, the land use typology area that our comprehensive plan designates for this site is urban low intensity, and everything about this development fits within that criteria. So, the comprehensive plan even designates the area you're referring to across the street as essentially urban reserve. So, the intention here is that it's going to continue to become more dense, and I don't happen to have the overlay with me, but you're going to have a turnpike pretty close to here sometime soon as well, which is going to drive even more density. The nice thing, though, is that that is going to prompt and promote the city's concentration of resources to try to catch up to what's going on. And there isn't a perfect system. In my ward where I live, I see this all the time, but that growth can happen fast. The city's job is to accommodate that growth and then figure out how to manage it, and that's exactly what the comprehensive plan tries to do. And this development fits within the framework of that plan, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that you folks have come down here today to share your thoughts with this. And I have the sense that you're not going to walk away happy, and I'm sorry about that. But the reality is that our regulatory framework does not make a distinction between the kind of neighborhood that you live in and the kind of neighborhood that they're proposing. Your property is zoned R1. It's not rural. It's urban, density. And their property is zoned R1, which is the same. The difference between the size of the lots, while it may be, you know, aesthetically disruptive for you, is not a distinction that we recognize. So, and...
I mean, these types of lot size changes happen all over the city, and it really comes down to, you know, how you guys want to interact with your neighbors. There's not a difference. So, you can be friendly and neighborly with the people that move in next door, and you guys can have a real community there, or you decide that they're different.
I have one more person who signed up to speak.
I'm waiting to see if there are any questions. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Krug?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Richter. The other thing I guess I would say is, I do fully appreciate how frustrating it is to have people make promises about what is going to happen to land adjacent to you that is undeveloped, and not having that borne out in reality. But it is not at all uncommon. One of the reasons why people move into established neighborhoods is because they can see what's around them. When you move into an area where you're adjacent to undeveloped land, it's kind of a throw of the dice, I'll say, better than something else I could say.
My name's Rod Krug, and I live at thirty-eight oh five hundred Glen, which is in the Mirabella. Of course, I'm not a real estate knowledge, and I'm not anything with the water flow. Mine is strictly a monetary. And I know that there's no way that you can tell if it's going to increase your value. We all buy a house with the hopes that it's going to increase in value, not decrease. And if something next to you has a tendency to maybe, in past references, drop the value of your home, that's why I'm here. That's what I'm concerned about. The next thing I guess I'd like to ask is, what's the purpose of changing the zoning? Why would they want to go from the big to the small?
It's not changing zoning.
It's not a change in zoning. And it's not our job to question that, as long as it fits within the framework that A, the comprehensive plan provides for, that B, the zoning allows for, and that C, the codes protect to ensure that they meet those guidelines and the ordinances, and it fits all that criteria. So, to us, whether it's ninety lots or one hundred and forty-eight lots is almost moot, as long as it meets that criteria. If it didn't meet that criteria, then you'd be hearing us say something entirely different up here than what we've said today. But the fact that it does, it's, we're not going to attempt to legislate for the owner of the property, of the developer, as to how many lots they should build. That's not what we're here to do.
And I apologize, because this is the first time for me to...
No, that's all right.
No, we understand.
The answer to your question is that that is market-driven. They're choosing to go with a smaller lot size because they think that's what will sell.
I guess, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, probably more lots, there'll be a better economic advantage. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's because of market that can sell a house at that price. I don't know the Oklahoma City market. But I'm just going that. That would, to me, it looks like that would be strictly a monetary reason to sell more lots.
It may very well be.
Yeah, maybe I'm wrong. So, I guess what I'm just asking you guys, or appealing to you guys, just, and I don't want to get into this, but I guess I will. There's nothing wrong with living in a mobile home park. But if you lived across the street in a mobile home park... in a mobile home park, you wouldn't anticipate that your property value would increase. And I guess that's the... And I'm sorry. I guess that's the quickest...
Sure.
That's the first thing that popped into my head to be able to... I'm not saying that in a negatory way.
I understand what your issue is, and just real quickly to speak to that, we all up here deal with this all the time, and with these questions of like, well, I paid a certain amount for my home, and I'm scared that the development next door... Really, that's what it gets down to, right? We're scared that the development next door is going to cost us money and it's going to lower our value or our quality of life. Let me tell you, there is no credible study that that has ever been true. Generally, what we see is that it will raise the value of your home. This development will raise the value because it will bring additional services to your area, and those services will benefit you and the future value of your home. Like, there's just not any credible study that I've ever seen that supports the opposite.
And, you know, I'm just going because I don't have any experience with that or anything.
Instinctually, we all get scared and we worry about that. And I totally understand it, but I can't guarantee that this is going to keep the value of your home either, but that's what I've seen.
I had one other thing, and it just escaped me, so I guess that's it unless there's any other questions.
We talked you out of it, huh?
I'm sorry?
So, we talked you out of it, huh?
Pretty much.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners?
It looks like we've got one more.
I'll just reach into the room without pulling out the talking paper, and if you would indulge me...
Would you give us your name and address for...
My name is Dakota Lowe. I live in Walden Estates, which is directly north of the proposed development.
Your address?
9510 Southwest 35th Terrace, Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
To address Mr. Highsmith's comments about there being no credible evidence of this going to lower property values, my argument is not to get up here and argue about property values, although I do own a real estate brokerage. I am an attorney. That is what happens when you have lower-priced homes next to a higher-priced home. The property value is devalued. That is, by all the studies, what happens. My argument is that, one, the infrastructure in these roads are dangerous for the increased capacity. There's no traffic control devices here. There's no turning lane into this 148-lot neighborhood. We have a turning lane into Walden Estates. I believe Marabella has a turning lane. There's no turning lane. There's no ability... There's no stop sign here. There's no stop light. The traffic control in this area is a serious issue. Additionally, the police and fire infrastructure in this area is terribly lacking. Firstly, it takes the police approximately an hour to respond to my neighborhood, anyone in my neighborhood. I know I set off the alarm in my house at 4:00 in the morning last year. It took them over an hour to respond. No phone call, an hour for the police to respond to what could be a home invasion. This is only going to increase and exacerbate that problem. The police can't handle the crime that's going on in the area, and bringing in 148 more homes is just going to increase the crime in the area. And I'm sorry, because the statutes only require notice to be given to adjacent property owners, I wasn't given notice, so I am wholly unprepared to make any kind of coherent argument to you today. But I believe that lot is 35 acres. Is that correct?
The subject property?
Yes. And there are 148...
Slightly over 35 acres.
There's 148 lots. Is that correct?
That's what we're told. The new preliminary plat provides for 148 lots.
So, 4.21 dwelling units per acre.
Not the three dwelling units stated previously, and that doesn't include four common areas or streets. So, there's going to be...
No, it does.
How many? I mean, there's less acreage to put 148 units on.
The dwelling units per acre, I believe, accounts for all the infrastructure supporting development.
Yeah.
Well... I'll tell you this. Today, we had a case come through the consent docket that provides for 8.15 dwelling units per acre, okay? And it adjoins my neighborhood, and I respect what you're saying. I was there when they came through and rezoned the property. I was there when they came through on the preliminary plat, and it was a perfectly appropriate development that fell within the same criteria we're holding this to today, and I supported that development for the same reasons. We can argue about whether or not it will or it won't increase or decrease value. That is truly not a consideration that, as planning commissioners, we're here to think about. Our job, your comments about police and fire are well-taken. That's legitimate. My biggest concern is the flooding that some of your neighbors have talked about. To me, that's the biggest issue that we have to try to figure out and address. But to Mr. Highsmith's point, where he is actually absolutely correct, is that that increase in density in the area will promote the necessity for city services to improve in this area. So, while they may not be great, if you're concerned about those things, then bringing more people to the area is what will help that.
In the long term?
In the long term.
In the short term, we're all going to suffer burglaries and...
But to your point, if it's not good now, the only way to make that any better is for that development to continue. So, I...
My other concern is, I also live right behind our retention pond.
Yeah.
And if their water's flowing into our retention pond, because they don't have a retention pond...
And I think the developer and Mr. Johnson needs to address for us, and that's really what I'd like to hear about, is I'd like to hear about the possibility of using the common space, which, to your point and to get a response there, we're provided the minimum amount of open space, which is a concern for me, given the flooding issues that we have presented. So, we all respect and appreciate the concerns. It's not that we don't, but we need to focus on the things that we can deal with here today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just putting this here with this stuff. Mr. Johnson, let's talk about using your open space for detention.
It's a natural... And again, detention's required. We're offering that. Their water comes onto us. We're not draining onto them. All the grading may not be 100% complete. The project stalled after the installation of the street due to the developers, the original developers' family condition. The final plat will be coming before you. All the calculations and plans have already been approved and installed. Prior to you hearing the final plat, I will submit to the Public Works Department a summary of the drainage and investigate all the comments that have been made today and make sure that our final grading plan that was provided originally still holds true. We did these plans a number of months, almost two years ago, I think, and there weren't as many houses on our east side, so we want to make sure that we do adhere to that, and we'll agree to do that prior to final plat. But as I said, currently, the plans for Phase 1 and the drainage and everything's actually built and has been accepted by the city. The final grading of the lots has not been completed, and in that, I will address the detention issue that we're willing to agree to provide.
When did you say the final plat will come before us?
9th, August 9th, if that's the right date.
I think it is.
Yep. Your next meeting.
Okay.
You guys have mentioned it. I mean, we're in the urban low. It promotes 48 units per acre. My math earlier is bad. We were closer to four than three. The Morgan Road is an issue, and I think the city has it on their radar. And to your point, there will be infrastructure improvements that will be required to improve... When they improve Morgan Road, it'll improve the drainage conditions. Our system is designed according to public works standards. You know, we pick up the 50, overfill the 100, which is standard. We are also within the urban fire response at this location, so, again, supporting the urban development that's promoted in the plan. And in summary, on top of the request to provide detention pursuant to public works approving that, we would like our streets to be public and not private, as the preliminary plat says, and we'll state that on the final plat.
Okay. I hope your conversation with Ms. Limley was productive.
Mark went out and talked to her, gave her card. I will be contacting her and trying to work with her again to get a drainage easement to allow us to make that situation better.
Great. Okay. Commissioners, where are we?
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, on drainage.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for park place heights revised. Mr. Johnson, I hope that when you come back August 9th, we can talk about the drainage issue. I candidly recognize it's not your client's problem, but I think the thing to do here is to try to find a solution, even if it's an interim one, that allows us to feel good about what we're doing here to try to address it.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat, park place heights revised with public streets, no gated community, and with hopefully some progress on the drainage issues. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 19 is PC 10536 to rezone 12400 North Santa Fe from C3 to I3.
Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a unique little area, hopefully not as problematic. Santa Fe railroad tracks, Santa Fe Avenue, 122nd Street. All of this is zoned heavy industrial. It's in the OKC plan as heavy industrial. This little pink piece here was rezoned a number of years ago to allow a church to utilize an existing building. It was switched to C3. The existing R1 that is here is currently being utilized by AT&amp;T, where they have outdoor storage, and they're using it as an industrial, but it's zoned R1 because they're a public utility. They can't... So, we're asking, on behalf of the owners of this property, who have acquired this property, to zone it back to the I3 use, that their property is currently zoned to expand their business to this location, to the east side of Santa Fe. Happy to answer your question.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Johnson? I don't know if he signed up to speak on this item. I did go out and look at this property. I did not... It did not raise any red flags for me.
I happen to drive by this nearly every day, as it were, on the way to my office, so I'm pretty familiar with it. It seems like an appropriate area for what's going on there. There's not discussion. I'd move to recommend approval to City Council.
I'm sorry, having said that. Why I3 as opposed to I2 or...
So, the property owner that owns this is traffic control. They manufacture traffic pieces for signals, signage, and what they do requires a heavier zoning.
Oh, okay.
And so, they prefer to go back to what it was originally as I3 and pairs it up with the lumber storage to the north.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a valid question. I just... It's also, there's two sides of this thing that are also I3, too. And it's sandwiched in between two highways.
Correct.
Right. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item number 19. Could you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
We've already heard 20 and 21, so we are on item 22, SPOD 1067 to rezone 735 Southwest 89th Street from C3 to SPOD 1067.
Is the applicant present?
I'll say before we start... Come to the center if you would. There was some confusion in the line about the issue of sidewalks, not sidewalks. It's got sidewalks, so that's not really a thing.
Riley Gibson with OK Dent Works. My address is 735 Southwest 89th Street.
The question that I have for you, there's a sort of very specific notation that the kind of painting that you're going to be doing on-site will not require a paint booth.
Right. It's just spot panel painting. Our main business is hail damage repair, so it's not like a collision shop or body shop or anything like that.
So, it's not like a full body paint thing?
No.
Okay.
Just very little spot panel painting, and that's it.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions, Mr. Gibson? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval to City Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 22. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 23 is SPOD 1068 to rezone 4101 Northwest 24th from R2 to SPOD 1068.
Again, Tim Johnson, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an infill project. Let me get this turned around, right? Sorry. This is Douglas Avenue and 24th Street. Vacant lot here. We're proposing a multi-unit complex there that will take access from the Douglas side and have parking in the rear. We submitted an SPOD for this purpose. Commissioner Powers was... Chairman Powers was kind enough to meet with me on this and asked us to add a couple of things to the application, which we're willing to do. The application includes both building signage and a small sign to identify the parking lot. We've agreed to limit the signage to the building only and no additional signage for the parking area. We agree to repair and install sidewalks to the five-foot standards if they are damaged or removed during construction. We're currently in our plan matching the four-foot sidewalks that exist there. It's probably a good opportunity that we're going to upgrade those. They're not in good shape. And then, we will amend the PUD language to add the standard language of the 70% masonry, 30% stucco limitations, and we say that because the original sketch that was given to us by the applicant was just a stucco look, so he's willing to go with the masonry to 70%. With that, we agree with the TEs of the staff and ask your approval.
Go ahead.
I would make one comment. I actually looked at this property with a previous client, and I think our... I think your site plan looks very similar to one we created, so I can't fault the logic that developed this plan. I think it looks good, and I'll be in support.
I bet you do like the TEs, Tim. There are none. I bet you'll agree to everyone.
I almost said that.
Yeah, unconditional agreement, yeah.
If I could make a motion, I would make a motion in favor of this, but in the absence of that, I won't entertain one.
I will make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for SPOD 1068 with the amended language under architecture. amended language under architecture that requires 70% brick veneer rock or stone masonry.
Okay.
As well as a limitation to one sign on the building. And what was the other one? I'm sorry, I've lost my count. Oh, the sidewalks, yes. Okay. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 24 is S P U D 1070 to rezone 900 Northwest 90th Street from R 1 to S P U D 1070.
Again, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This particular site is the home of the church that I go to, is Lincoln Christian Church up at 91st and Ollie. The church, over the years, as houses have been demolished around them, has acquired property to put to good use for the neighborhood. It's definitely a neighborhood church. It serves the Hispanic community that's there. And our church was, has, has started a tennis program as a ministry, and it's been so successful that they want to build the tennis courts. They're being given a grant to build the tennis courts on their property so that the practice can be done here, not at the greens or some other place that donates space. So this is simply a S P U D that would allow residential use, but as well, on top of that, the ability to build these three courts. And then sometime in the future, another activity, currently they use it as a soccer field for the neighborhood kids, use it at no charge. The tennis courts will be open, but their intended use is for the youth program at the church. And I'm not sure there's any technical evaluation. Nope.
I went by and looked at this. I think this is a great addition both to the church and to its integration in the neighborhood, which it is very well integrated into the neighborhood. It is surrounded by residential uses, of course. I had a couple of questions. First of all, the, I mean, the language, the only concern that I have about this is, you know, that the lighting and sort of that kind of thing not be intrusive into the residential. And I sort of, it's one of those things where you feel like, as long as this church has got a control of it, I wouldn't worry about it because I know they're very sensitive to that. But I would like to see some language, some way to tighten that up a little bit. I don't know whether it would be by hours of operation or what. I'm going to let you work that out with staff.
And I think we can do that. We can definitely limit the hours of operation.
Yes, as something. I just, I wouldn't, wouldn't want it to become intrusive at some point in the future. Then you also make comment in the, the staff report makes comment about taking access onto the surrounding streets. There's access onto, to the east and to the north, onto, I guess it's Ollie to the west. Is, there's not actually an existing curb cut there? Would you use the alley to the south, or do you have a sense of that?
Well, currently, there's no proposed parking to be had on this property. It's all going to be used in the church property across the street. That's why, as part of our proposal, we'll be coming back and making requests of the traffic staff to ask for a crosswalk at the four-way stop at Francis. And so all of our access is anticipated to be pedestrian. However, if something happens here that requires a couple parking spaces, like a building or some ancillary use, we wanted the ability to take access off the abutting public streets.
And so my question to you is, could the access on the east be through the existing alleyway, or do you need to retain the ability for a curb cut onto Ollie?
We could probably eliminate that on the east side because once these are built, that alley is not improved. There are alleys in the neighborhood that are improved, but this particular one is not improved.
Okay.
And so I don't see us ever needing access over there, as long as these are tennis courts.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council for S P U D 1070.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 24. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
Item 25 is P U D 1684 to rezone 3175 North Portland from C 3 to P U D 1684.
Good afternoon. Mason Schwartz, 522 Culcore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What we have here is the Portland Park apartment complex. It has been an apartment complex for a number of years. It has been a legally non-conforming use under a C 3 zoning. The entire piece has been C 3 zoning. So our really main and only goal here today is to rezone this property so the use is under the correct zoning. Staff report does recommend approval subject to three T E's. I think it's probably the most useful to take those three E's actually, those three T E's actually in reverse order. The first T E deals with, I'm sorry, first T E will deal with, which would be number three, it says the P U D should be amended to provide for two development tracks, an R 4 tract, and a C 3 tract, limited to their respective spaces. We can agree to that T E. I think there was some confusion when we originally submitted the P U D, thinking that that area that I have outlined in red in this Google Earth exhibit that I passed out, thinking that that was part of it. It's not actually part of the P U D. The commercial piece of the P U D is that southeast building that is circled in yellow. We are willing to say that that piece would be permitted C 3 and R 4 because that building on the southeast side actually has retail in the front, which would be the east, and has units, residential units in the back, which would be the west. So that would need to be mixed use. The remainder of the pre-existing apartment complex within the P U D, we are willing to say, would be governed by R 4. So in that regard, we can agree to T E number three. T E number two addresses the access points, asking the most eastern access point on Oliver and the most southern access point on Portland to be closed off. We would ask those T E's to be struck. As you can see, those two, first, they're pre-existing access points. So we believe that with this application today, first and foremost, we are just trying to get this into the correct zoning, and so we would ask that what's already been out there be permitted to remain. But specifically to the retail use that's there in that southeast building, these access points are critical. The other access point to the north is really more for that food mart, which again is not part of the P U D, excuse me. Furthermore, we believe, and we haven't talked to fire about this, but we would believe that, we would submit that if there was going to be access to the southeast building for the retail use through where the food mart drive is, it would not allow a fire truck or some sort of emergency vehicle the correct radius to turn around there. It would cause issues with turning radius in that parking lot. And most importantly, it is critical that direct access to Portland for that retail use. So in that regard, we would ask T E number two to be struck. T E number one deals with sidewalks. It asks sidewalks to be put in place all up and down Portland. And then as well, on the north side of the drainage there on 31st, which would be the south side of 31st Street. We would ask this to be struck for a couple reasons. We had conversations yesterday with planning. It is our understanding that, under the Better Streets, Better Cities project, that planning is going or anticipating, recommending sidewalks to be installed by the city on Portland between 23rd and 36th in September, anticipating construction sometime within the next year. So if that were not the case, and they asked for sidewalks in Portland, we understand that, we would be agreeable to it, but because of the plans that we understand to be in place, we would ask to not be the only ones up and down there to not have to wait for that project. On the north side of the drainage, you can kind of see it, and I spoke with Ms. Powers briefly about this, but there appears to be, or there is, some sort of fenced in with a wooden fenced-in facility for the city's gas utilities. And so when you actually go out there and look at 31st Street, I'm not really sure if you could even fit a sidewalk up there above the drainage with that obstruction in place.
There's also a sidewalk too on the north side of 31st as well, right?
Correct. And so, in fact, all of the sidewalks that you see on that Google Earth image, those are new. I think a year or so old. And so those sidewalks would put in, they would still have access to Portland, it just would not be on the south side of that 31st Street. So that, that's why we ask the sidewalks to be struck as well. So we believe ultimately, this large piece of property that probably, or can nearly guarantee would not be zoned C 3 today, if done, would be better off R 4s, the more correct, more proper use. And so with that, and with our stipulations as the T E's, we would ask for your approval and happy to answer any questions.
So what we talked about with respect to the sidewalks was coming up with some sort of language that if, in fact, the city approves a project to install sidewalks along Portland, that that will take care of that issue. If not, it'll come back to the developer and they'll install them. There's a bus stop right in front of this complex on Portland, and so, you know, the sidewalks need to be there one way or the other. And my understanding is they're okay with that?
How do we, how do we do that?
Yeah, how do we do that?
We'll have to somehow keep track of that planning project for the sidewalks, and if for some reason it doesn't get approved by council, we'll have to go with, to the developer and ask them to put the sidewalks in.
They ask them or require them?
If it agrees to put it in the P U D, it would be a requirement. If they don't, it's a, it's a zoning violation.
Sure. We'd be willing to stipulate and say, developer, owner shall be required to install sidewalks in Portland if they're not installed by the city by X date. Something reasonable with the timeline the city has for the sidewalks.
I would, I think probably approval of the project would be a better thing than installation because that, the timing on that would be difficult, I think, but to pin down. But if they approve the project and the city's going to do it, I'm okay with that.
I'd still love to see the sidewalks on Northwest 31st Street.
There are sidewalks on the north side of 31st Street.
I understand.
I think that the physical barrier, I mean, if you go by and look at this property, the actual thing is.
And it would have to go to the south of it, right? And, I mean, arguably, it has to go to the south of the fenced-in area.
Right.
Which gets you really close to that drainage culvert. I mean, to me, it's almost better if the sidewalk system directs people away from that than toward it.
I agree.
Okay. I'll leave it up to those that actually visited the site.
And to your, to your point, I published, circulated the same photo that we, I got from Google Earth today. When you see it from, when you're looking at Portland West and you see it, it makes a lot of sense. From this picture, it just looks like a little piece, but, I mean, it's an obstruction. With no doubt.
It's a significant obstruction.
Okay, well, real quick, I also do hate curb cuts, so the less, the better. I'd love staff to just remark on the request to eliminate the two that are mentioned.
Before they do that, let me say, again, having visited the site, this, this was not terribly well-designed when it was laid out. The turn radiuses within these parking lots are so narrow. And, I mean, I was looking at it without cars parked there, I can't even imagine. I don't think you could get a fire truck in there if you don't take it directly off of Portland. So I'm, I mean, I, I agree, the elimination of the curb cuts, and I knew this would be an issue for you, so I was thinking about it. But, but in this particular case, I just don't think it's existing, it was designed in this way, I just don't think it's worth messing with.
Yes, and to further that point, I mean, if you take those curb cuts out, there's really no other curb cut going to that retail use. I mean, I understand, you don't need three or four for one, you know, retail shopping center, but to try to direct people through that food mart turn-in, I think would be a little bit.
But that's kind of what we ask people to do now with new development.
Do you guys own that food mart spot?
No.
Is that excluded? It's not even under the common ownership, it's a separate parcel?
It's a separate parcel.
Yeah. Yeah. Here's the thing. The other thing is too, I can't, I can't get behind, like, this development has existed for a really long time. It's kind of like when somebody's sign blows down in the wind and they go to get a permit, and now they can't have the 40-foot sign they've had for 40 years. I just can't, I can't get behind that. And this is a curb cut that's existed here, it's served the property, it's in existence, it's across, I mean, it, I just, I don't really, I can't, I don't want to mess with it. I totally get what you're saying. I didn't even think about the parking lot congestion, honestly.
Oh, my God.
But that's another good point. You're, you're going to be maneuvering around to try to get out of this parking lot one way going back to the north. It's just not, it's not ideal.
Well, I'm not going to, is it in a hill I'm going to down today? But I do want to say that, you know, it's, it's like the sidewalk question. This is the city's opportunity to write things that otherwise would never be fixed.
And I have no problem with that as a general principle. Go by and look at this property, I think you'll feel better about it. I mean, it really is just, there's not, there's not a way to make it work otherwise, I don't think.
I just think, you know, with the signs, with the curb cuts, et cetera, I always want to push. I think this is what we should do.
I agree. I'm totally in favor of twisting arms every time I get a chance.
And one more point to that, I think there is a number of residential lots to the south and west there that can access this off of Oliver, and I think that south piece at least, if it's a retail center and it's something that they want to get to, kind of a neighborhood use, that allows them to not have to go out to Portland.
But I would actually be, like, the one that I like the least is the one, the southern most one on Portland. So if we could eliminate that and keep the Ollie one.
Sure. That would, that's, on the flip side, that's the most important to anybody in that retail center, to have that at least one direct access point on the Portland frontage to their shopping center.
Anyway, I, I'll entertain a motion. Somebody? Long day.
We've eliminated T E number two, essentially, and, but I don't think we settled on language to identify the tracks. Is staff comfortable that we can identify those the way they've laid out? So do I need to amend T E number three to appease you at this point, or I can just say, as amended, and you feel comfortable we're there?
Sure. If we have to clean up from a zoning standpoint, to survey that building, I mean, we'll do what we need to do, but as far as amending the T E, we're willing to commit that, that piece that hosts that southern east building will be one tract, the rest will be other tract.
Say it's amended for the minutes, then we'll deal with the language.
Okay.
Okay. I move to recommend approval to City Council for P U D 1684, eliminating T E number two and amending T E number three in accordance with our discussion in the minutes.
And, and amending T E number one.
And number one.
Sorry. And amending T E number one, or, well, eliminating T E number one.
T E number one, I think you wanted to.
We're going to amend it because they're going to, we're going to figure out the Portland frontage.
We're eliminating the sidewalk requirement on 31st Street.
Correct.
How do we want to amend?
And that the Portland Avenue sidewalks would be required if not approved by the city.
There you go. We're going to let cities, we're going to let staff sort that out.
What they said.
Agreeable to that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 25, eliminating T E number two and amending T E's number one and three as discussed. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you. I'm going to stay put because I have the next one.
Okay.
Again, Mason Schwartz, 522 Culcore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a rezoning application for the Orr Family Farm. I'm sure most of you are familiar. This property has been a mainstay in the southern piece of Oklahoma City for a number of years. Dr. Orr is here with me if any questions need to be directed at the property owner. The genesis of this application is, Dr. Orr seeks to, as you know, if you're familiar with the Orr Family Farm, a number of activities go on out there. It's amusement activities, entertainment, educational opportunities. There are work retreats, there are weddings, any number of such events. And what he seeks to do is expand and add a certain number of Conestoga wagons, which are essentially wagons that people can come overnight and stay in, essentially in a campground type of use. Along with that, there will be added teepee uses. So this is kind of a common or a popular use that you see kind of throughout the country these days, and it's, I think it's kind of a unique opportunity to have somewhat of a unique camping experience. So Mr. Orr submitted an application to the Board of Adjustment for a special exception. This property is zoned AA, and so the campground usage is permitted by special exception. Under AA, the board, from our understanding, was of the opinion that, you know, based on the fact that some of these uses that are already in place out there at the Orr Family Farm right now, they were permitted back in the day by special exception. So with the second special exception coming through, the Board of Adjustment thought out, why isn't we come back for the legislative process, look at this and rezone it? But the gist of what But the gist of what we're trying to get done today as far as the operation goes is allowing the Conestoga wagons and the TP. So some of the restrictions we put on the Conestoga wagons and the TP use is not within 300 feet of the east portion of the property. They will be serviced by porter potties, which will be disposed of off-site. So right now, there's currently a lagoon system in place and a water well system in place that's been operating there just fine for a number of years, they won't add any increased capacity to that system that's in place. Staff report recommends approval subject to TEs, we are agreeable to all the TEs, but we do want to make it clear based on some of the language in the staff report regarding utilities that we do intend, as it says in the PUD, to keep the lagoon system in place, to keep the current water well system in place. Now, one thing I think we had discussed, excuse me, this powers, was the use unit and limiting the commercial lodging. We can, we are willing to agree here and amend a version of the PUD that there will be absolutely no hotel usage or anything of that sort, we can write that into the PUD. I know that's a concern with perhaps the commercial lodging use unit, but again, those use units are simply in there to allow for these expanded operations of Conestoga wagons and the TP's. The other use units are the ones that we work with staff to figure out what best and captures all the different activities that are already going on out there, and specifically including the language in the PUD to help specify that that's what we're trying to do. So-
You're not going to be-
I'm sorry.
You're not going to be in any short-term rentals, right?
No short-term rentals.
Talking to staff about this prior to the meeting, you know, I think what was giving me a little bit of dis-ease about the language, it's just waffly language, you know, the lawyer in me, I can't help it. It says that the purpose of this PUD is to permit the continued operation of all uses associated with the Orr Family Farm and to further permit the addition of Conestoga wagons and TP's. I think if we could change that language just to indicate that, that the use unit is limited to the Conestoga wagons and TP's, that would satisfy that waffly feeling for me. If, that's agreeable to you?
Yes.
Commissioners, do we have any comments, questions, concerns?
Place has been here a long time, they've been operating here a long time, everybody's familiar with what they're doing.
I've been there numerous times.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have kids, you've been here, so.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion, but I'll, you guys good with that? I'll make, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1688 with the amended language to 8300.50 and 8300.51, that the lodging accommodations be limited to Conestoga wagons and TP's, not something I say a lot. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 26, with the addition of that language limiting the lodging accommodations to wagon, Conestoga wagons and TP's. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
We've already heard number 27, we're on number 28, SP 509, it's to operate a spectator sports and entertainment use at PUD 1515.
One last time, Tim Johnson here on behalf of the applicant. Those of you that are familiar with the Chisholm Creek development up on Memorial between Western and Penn, this, the development you've seen up there today, it has been the Topgolf, which is on the east side, the Track 30 on the east side, and the current development is developing around the Point, which is the, where the detention pond lake is, and all the restaurants that are going in. As you can see, there's a lot of vacant land going this way. This is the proposed location of the entertainment, special use. This is Walmart and Sam's, more land owned by Chesapeake, not Chesapeake, sorry, Chisholm Creek. It's about a 20-year flub, 20-year flub. Directly south of this site is a very large detention pond that the city is finishing up. It's a regional pond that serves the Chisholm Creek Basin. It's been under plan for years and finally got funded, and it is almost complete.
He might be one of those on board or whatever.
Hopefully not that big. The newest development is the west side, which has the coffee and the, the other restaurants that are over here in the salon. So it's kind of placed in the middle of, as their development grows east and grows west, they think this is a good utilization of the property for the next several years. We were served by having Parkway that has entrances that are getting ready to be improved on Penn to dual lefts, both directions. We have a signalized intersection at Pawnee and Western, Pawnee and Memorial Road as well. So the existing public streets that serve south here and across here to 131st are anticipated to be extended as additional service access at the time we come in with a permit for this. So that's it. The special use application kind of speaks for itself. We agree with all the TEs, again.
Does your field have emergency access?
Yes. The, their access will be, they're budding Highland, but their emergency access would be the extension of these two public streets. We haven't decided whether those will continue to be public or private as they extend south.
I don't, if you didn't put something like this here, I don't know where you would put it. I mean, this is kind of spectator sports and entertainment central, so. Do we have questions, concerns, comments?
Mainly soccer field, football field, rugby field.
It's sized for soccer and football. It's anticipated it can also be used as a concert venue with the stage facing north.
Energy, have any plans to plan there?
I've not heard that.
They were just there at their stadium last night, they need a new stadium bed. Parking is terrible.
That's a public void.
Yeah, not biting.
There's no discussion, I'll make a motion to recommend approval on the application.
No second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 28. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 29 is PC 10529 to rezone 2609 North Martin Luther King Boulevard to HL, HP, or HL Overlay District. And Katie Fridle, our Historic Preservation Planner, is here to give you background on this case.
Hello. In November 2017, an interested citizen brought this property to the Historic Preservation Commission and asked that they consider designating it as a historic landmark. And Mr. Washington's here today. The commission initiated that process, asked staff to prepare a report, and in May found the property to be eligible under several of our designation criteria. The property is significant for its association with the civil rights movement, with Clara Luper herself as a historic figure, and with a specific historic event, which was the 1968 arson attempt on the Freedom Center. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended that the property be designated as a historic landmark. As far as the history of the Freedom Center, it was established in 1967 within a former mobile oil gas station and was home to the NAACP Youth Council, an important organization within the civil rights movement nationwide and here in Oklahoma City. This is where protests, marches, strikes, rallies, other advocacy efforts in the civil rights movement generated in Oklahoma City. It's also where hundreds gathered to mourn the death of Martin Luther King Jr. and where all sorts of community programs and public services were provided. The current appearance of the building, which is not identical to the historic appearance, is in part reflective of ongoing efforts to rebuild in response to numerous attacks on the structure. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
What will, what will this overlay really afford this, this property longer term?
So this is the same type of overlay that's in place on other historic landmarks and historic districts in the city. It provides the kind of protection and oversight and regulation of the design review by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right.
It would provide a review process for any proposed changes to the building or proposed demolition. There aren't any, there aren't financial incentives or other kind of perks that really come along with it, other than that protection and that recognition.
Does it help the building qualify for certain tax credits and things like that?
That would only be if we, they also pursued a listing on the National Register.
Got it, okay, that's the distinction, that's what I need, thanks.
Well, I'm really pleased to see that the city, you know, making this attempt to recognize in a very public way the, the history of the civil rights movement in our city, at least this particular component of it. Do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Fridle? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll gladly make a motion to approve the application.
Oh, 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 I'm so sorry, I'm so, so sorry. Michael Washington.
I finally get a chance.
So sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's great, you know, she was actually speaking for me. And Ms. Fridle, I tell you what, she's my voice, no. Well, thank y'all again, even in her, in her program, the historical preservation part of it, they said to me, I said, "I can't believe that we got Michael Washington sitting there for four or five hours." Yes, yes, yes. See, yeah. But anyway, in retrospect, that's definitely a historical occasion, very instrumental in the civil rights struggle here in Oklahoma, and of course abroad as well. And not only that, to reestablish the opening of the Freedom Center once again would also help the northeast side of Oklahoma City. For the most part, a lot of us don't realize now that because the Freedom Center is situated on the northeast side of Oklahoma City as well, close to I-35, a lot of tourists is going to be coming through. And if they want to come in and visit this monumental structure in this state, they say, "Wow, that's Freedom Center, really?" You know, so that ended up itself saying this here, and I'm getting ready to close because like I said, y'all almost missed my supper, but anyhow. But it is very significant, all joking aside, and then also that'll help our youth for the most part, again, like I said, gang violence in other structures and things, you know, quick exit from education and things, it's nature, like I said, it was a Freedom Center did, it has its historical significance to it because it gives not only an interest to the African-American community, but it gives, I think, an interesting topic to various cultures that we want to establish it as being everybody's. It's not just for African-Americans, it's for your children, anybody else that may want to learn at this particular time and occasion. And also in closing, it will also, I believe, bring businesses back to the northeast side because like I said, right now it's an eyesore. And for the most part, for the most part, for many years, it was one of the main instruments and then structures that did bring a lot of businesses before a lot of things that occurred to prevent that from going on from this point. But again, once again, last word here, I think again, if y'all vote to bring that in, you'll save me from having a heart attack. And numbers, see, I'm going to get out. But anyhow, thank y'all very much, and hopefully that I guess, so y'all can sit there. Ms. Fridle, you've done a great job, you and your committee as well, and I thank y'all for this opportunity. And as Arnold Schwarzenegger once said before, and this is in my book that I'm writing, "I'll be back." Thank y'all.
Well, we appreciate your dedication, this is a long meeting to sit through.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, now the air conditioner's been cut, I think it's a hint, so.
I will make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10529. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 29. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 30, 31, and 32 were deferred. Item 33 is SPOD 1072 to rezone 118 Southwest 43rd from R1 to SPOD 1072.
Is our applicant present? We scared them off.
They just couldn't take it anymore.
We actually had talked about perhaps continuing this case, maybe it, did it filter out there, you think, just by osmosis? Well, shall we just do that? Shall we just continue this item until August 9th?
I'll make a motion to continue SPOD 1072 to the August 9, 2018 meeting.
Did we have some people here to be heard on it?
We asked that question.
Oh, it looked like they were about to leave, so I was checking. Oh, okay, gotcha, sorry.
I have a motion, and a second. No, yes?
This is, this, is this your application?
The next one.
Oh, okay.
You're saying the next.
I'm sorry, you confused me, I'm sorry, I made the motion.
Okay, guys.
I made the motion, I'm good.
A motion, a second, to continue, item number 33, to the next meeting. Would you cast your votes, please? It is continued.
And item 34 is PUD 1681 to rezone 13605 Northwest Expressway from AA to PUD 1681.
Commissioners, Chairman, Counselor, Director, my name is D.W. Converse, I represent Converse Surveying Engineering, address is 2313 Silverfield Lane, Ebb and Oklahoma. I represent Mr. Kovay here. I agree to all the TE's. I'll give you the short version of this. Basically, there are seven lots, five are going to be residential, two will be commercial. They're budding on Portless Expressway. You see, the uses are pretty limited, this is going to be a nice development. Mr. Kovay is going to live there with his family, that'd be his own private little development. I'm not sure about if he's going to own the businesses or not, but it's basically going to be his, if you live in a home. There is a drainage area to the west of Track Number One, look up here, I'm calling Track One. Do I have a cul-de-sac coming in? But that, I agree, like I said, I agree to all the TE's. I'm open for questions and ask that you would give us favorable consideration.
I do have a few questions for you.
Sure.
Our staff report indicates a 50/30 split on the architectural facade, I assume that's just a typographic area, and you're just going to do 70/30 like everybody always agrees to.
Correct.
And I would like to see the language change, and again, I don't, I've never known whether this is you or us, but the screening regulations indicate here that they'll be screening adjacent to any residential use. Since you're the ones that are doing the development, I'd like that to say residentially zoned so that it's not a question of, "We got here before you did and now we don't have to screen."
We're all in on that.
Okay. And there's, there's no discussion about the placement of dumpsters. We typically like to see that at least 50 feet from any residential property line.
Not a problem.
Okay.
I'm trying, I'm trying to keep track of these, the 50-
Dumpsters.
50 feet from adjoining properties?
Please, yes, residential property.
Residential properties, that means it's going to be on the front side of those tracks. And there'll probably be shared dumpsters for those two sides because there's-
And then, I had staff go back and look for us, we recently rezoned property just slightly to the east of this-
I'm very much aware of it.
For which we allowed a monument sign, eight feet tall, 100 feet square.
I was already from my commissioner on the signs, I was a staff member here 25 years and did that job right over there, so I'm familiar with, we're going to have small signs. We're not going to have any sign pollution, we're not going to have any lighting pollution, and we're going to sight screen this thing so it's very nice with adjoining neighborhoods.
So we can agree to the eight foot, 100 square feet, eight foot tall, 100 square feet signs?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy.
Poll signs.
No poll signs.
No poll signs.
Says no poll signs.
No poll signs, monument signs only.
Oh, the other thing is, for some reason, and this is really more of a question for staff, there's this sort of reiteration that it, the SPD has to say there are no sidewalks permitted. What's with that?
My PUD actually says that. I know they put it in the TE's, but there's nothing out there.
Well, there's not any to anywhere.
I'd have to look back, his TE, his PUD wrote a little funny on sidewalks, so we just wanted to make it clear that they're not required, we don't put sidewalks.
And we're not going to require them?
We don't put sidewalks along a highway.
Okay, there you go.
And I actually revised my PUD to say that.
All right.
I saw the, well, I thought I said it, and I found it, but that's okay, we're agreeable.
Okay, I'm good. Anybody else?
Is there anyone here that wants to be heard? I'm not-
I don't think there's anybody left. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm here too.
You would be Mr. Washington?
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor. Oh, that was the last one, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little punch drunk.
I'm Kyle Taylor, 6608 Northwestern Avenue, number 212, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I'm Kyle Taylor, 6608 Northwestern Avenue, number 212, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I'm here, I'm on the Northwood Lake Homeowners Association Board, so here to speak on their behalf. As several months ago, we object to commercial development because it changes the rural character of the area, however, we recognize.
Pretty sure I remember you.
We recognize that the commission feels that the area along Northwest Expressway is obviously going to have some limited commercial development. We understand that. In this case, we appreciate the inclusion of the residential lots that they've done. It provides a nice buffer between our neighborhood and the commercial uses. Really, we only have some minor requests for limitations. The signs, we discussed that. The exterior is 730. We would request 100% brick and stone. That's a request.
That 70/30 split generally just allows for, you know, trim and so it's not.
Okay. Good there. And then, the one that we talked about on the last application regarding the restriction of the uses, this application includes the general retail sales and services use, which is basically all encompassing. I don't believe that he's going to do that, but it sets it up for unlimited retail and services in general to go there. We don't disagree with any of the other uses that he has.
Are there specific uses you'd like to see restricted?
Just primarily turning it into a high-use general store, any type of, just general retail sales. I understand all of his professional services and all the other uses that he cites that would be very consistent with commercial buildings that are surrounded by residences. Obviously, we wouldn't want it to turn into a convenience store or other type of general sales.
Convenience store would not be permitted under this, would it?
It wouldn't be permitted. I believe that's a special category.
JJ. Convenience store is not retail sales and services general, is it?
It's a separate use unit.
Yeah, it's a separate use unit, convenience store is, so.
Just more concerned about high traffic, you know, are you just sell cell phones? Do you turn it into a cellphone repair store? Do you turn it into any type of other retail establishments? Because it is so broad versus what I believe is intentional, intended use doesn't involve that, we would be more thinking towards the future of if he did sell it at some point or.
If this gets approved today, you might give some thought between now and City Council to specific uses that fall under the general retail sales and service that you would like to see excluded. And I'm sure Mr. Converse would be glad to give you his number, and you can discuss those with them and see if they're amenable to the elimination of those.
Yes, ma'am. And then the only other thing that we would request would be that the commercial buildings would be limited to a single story, which is consistent with the area throughout. All the other commercial development throughout the area has been limited to a single story.
Well, we'll pose that question to him for you. Even an R1 use would allow for two stories, but, but, Mr. Converse, what does your client think about a one-story limitation?
We're okay with one-story building. I met with the homeowners association, just for the record, and I asked at that time what issues were they wanting to have, you know, they didn't tell me, so I'm, like you, Madam Chairman, I, you know, I couldn't get anything out of them, but, you know, we pretty much know what we want to do now. And being that it is the Northwest Expressway, and this is a very hot developing area, you know, I can speak, I think Commissioner Highsmith talked about it last time in the meeting. I listened to your tape, and you know the area, know that things are going on out there to the, to the west. I'd like to see this in Oklahoma City because you get the sales tax. So I'd like to see this develop as broad a scope as possible because he doesn't know where it's going to be 10 years from now. Right now, we have an idea of what you're going to put in there, but, you know, next person comes along and says, hey, I want to do this. What's going to limit this, I think, is going to be the building code because parking's going to be an issue, you know, and that's, that site's rather small. Both those two lots are real small, so it's going to be tough to get something in there and do anything grandiose. There's not going to be a Sonic coming in there, or McDonald's, or anything of a high traffic volume because they just won't support it. So I think.
And those would not be permitted under the use unit here, so.
Correct. That's right. And we knew that going in. So we think we know what we want, and that's what we're asking for after having talked to staff and the site itself. So anyway, with that being said.
I think the general retail sales and services is appropriate for the site, but there are always, you know, those specific uses that some people find noxious. Oddly enough, people very often don't want liquor stores. But, you know, if you, if your client has a list of those or, you know, there are specific things, you might discuss that between now and council. As I was looking at this, all the ones that I could think of are all separate use units, so, and would not be permitted under just general retail sales, so.
Two minor corrections?
I'm sorry?
Two minor corrections, if I may?
Oh, yes.
We did offer to collect all of our requests and convey those. He said just wait until the meeting and present those. Just a correction, we had not collected our thoughts yet. I don't want to, we're not back in full time. But, yeah. And then Commissioner Highsmith had not actually been out to Northwest Expressway to see it in quite some time, also from the last meeting.
That's true.
But made some very valid, but made some very valid points as to the development. I mean, we obviously took it to heart and have.
It's not a great place to ride a bike, Al.
I was going to say.
It is absolutely not, and if we could work on.
Yeah, you better get going.
If we could work on that part, that would be great because it is not a great place to ride a bike at all. So appreciate your time very much.
Well, we appreciate you sitting through this meeting, so. Commissioners?
There's no discussion. I will move to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1681, subject to the TEs, as well as amending the master design statement for facade regulations to be 70% brick veneer rocker stone masonry, amending screening regulations 9.4 to say that shall be required adjacent to any residentially zoned property, amending 9.6 dumpster regulations to require a limitation 50 feet from any residentially zoned properties for dumpsters, amending 9.9 signage regulations to eight feet in height and 100 square feet monument signs, and amending Section 9.11 or 911 high regulations to only allow single-story commercial buildings permitted in tracks two and three.
You are so good at that.
And with that, I'll take a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 34, as amended, in accordance with Commissioner Craven's very, very efficient recitation.
It's amazing what's going on. It's getting hot.
Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, it got warmer real quick.
Yeah, yeah. That's their way of telling us it's time to go home.
And these last two items are companion items. This is the introduction for the ordinance that establishes a new urban design sub-district for the Lincoln Boulevard corridor, and Michael Fulbrook will give us a very high-level brief overview.
Madam Chair, and I have to tell you, in six minutes, I'm going to have to leave.
Yeah, what I'm thinking we ought to do is let the 25 words last, and then we'll do a fuller explanation the next time we hear this.
At the public hearing.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
The commission has seen this a couple times before at the Urban Development Committee meeting, both on May 10th and May 24th. I'm going to give you a real brief overview. We initiated this process almost two years ago, actually about two years ago, when the state came to us and asked us to consider development, design guideline rules for the stretch of North Lincoln Boulevard from Northeast 30th up to the I-44 interchange. And that was being done as a request because the state owns a number of properties in that corridor, and they are contemplating dispensing of some of those properties, and they wanted to make sure that before they were offloaded or sold, that there were some design changes in place to make sure that things in that corridor were developed accordingly and in the context of it being a major arterial entry to the state capitol. So I'm going to skip over the ideas of what an overlay district is. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. Okay. So what we're talking about doing here is establishing an urban design overlay district over the stretch of North Lincoln Boulevard, and that would put this area under the purview of the Urban Design Commission and make it subject to the same design review process and rules and regulations that apply to other areas like Northwest 23rd Street and Plaza District and some other areas that the Urban Design District controls. This is a view of the boundary. It's in the turquoise area, starting, as I said before, at the south end on Northeast 30th Street and stretching almost to I-44 at Central Park. Essentially, it goes lot depth or commercial zoning depth on either side of the street. There are some holes in it, which we've significantly noted before, are existing puds and spuds that are in the area that the overlay not affect. The new rules would include basically regulations for building height, maximum building height, minimum building height, setbacks, and so on and so forth. Man, I'm having trouble with its mouse. We have had a significant series of workshops and stakeholder meetings for this effort, starting back in spring of 2017 and taking us all the way forward to today. The most significant meetings, wow. Anyway, back to the design guidelines. We have regulations and design guidelines for signage, parking, fences, and so on and so forth, and we're asking that the commission introduce this for hearing at the next meeting.
That was pretty good. 25 words or less, yeah, I like that. I will charge you all to take some extra time to review this document since we're doing it so rapidly here.
We just need a motion to set it for public hearing, correct?
That's exactly right.
I'll make a motion to introduce and set for public hearing and recommendation on August 9, 2018, the amendment, the chapter 59 presented.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to.
Hear the thing.
Introduce and set for public hearing, item number 37. Would you cast your votes, please? That's what we're going to do.
Okay. And then the next action is so that the commission can initiate the application to rezone the property as an overlay district. So what this does is it will go concurrently with the proposal that establishes the standards that would apply in the overlay district, so they go together as an action, and if any modifications happen to what happens inside the overlay, the overlay will not be approved before those changes are made.
I'll take a motion.
Throw a little curveball here at me. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
To initiate the application.
Initiate the application.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to initiate an application to rezone property located along Lincoln Boulevard between Northeast 30th and Interstate I-44. Cast your votes, please. And that's approved.
That's all our items on the agenda.
Okay, so let's just make this quick. Has anybody got anything else they want to say? Planning commission committees, no members? Anybody? I dare you. Planning department?
I have an hour's worth of slides I'd like to present.
Municipal council? Okay, we're good. Citizens be heard. Nobody left. We chased them all away. Other business? I never know what that means. Adjournment?
Move. Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn. I'm the only one, buddy? Come on, come on, come on, you guys.
Just leaving.
Okay, then we're just.